Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. The public is welcome to attend our meetings in person or outside on the agenda. The meeting notice will reflect if the meeting is via Zoom calling. As the recent amendments to the open meeting law allow, the school committee may continue to hold meetings in public. Please note, the in-person meeting will be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. So all this meeting to order and state that public schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And I ask that you join me in this statement. We will start with the back. Stephanie will start.
Stephanie Delisi recording second.
Greg Bergen, Mayor.
Keith Minier of the School Committee.
Bill Marvin, School Committee.
Kathy Glantz, School Committee.
Melissa Texer, Front School Committee.
Or Wilson School Committee.
Jeremy McCain, School Committee.
Dr. Michael Javers, Director of Special Education Services.
Ben Lomas, Superintendent.
Amy Casparolo, Assistant Superintendent.
Mike Titus, Principal of O'Malley Innovation Al School.
And our first item of business is oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular super committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communication shall submit, or shall be limited to three minutes each, and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the according secretary. So if anybody would like to speak, please step up to the podium and name an address for the record, please.
My name is Carla O'Connor. Address is five Lookout Street, Gloucester. Just go on over. Okay. As I just said, my name is Carla O'Connor. I'm the mom to four boys. My oldest is currently in eighth grade at O'Malley. I'd like to express my extreme concern about the current status of learning and safety at O'Malley Middle School. I feel daily that I am sending him into an unsafe, unhinged, and utterly chaotic environment. Classes are consumed daily with behavioral issues above and beyond any level of normal disruption that can be expected for this age group. This is an extreme learning interference for the rest of the student population, and the perceived lack of consequences is very concerning. From my perspective, at this time, there are virtually no consequences for behavior. Students rule the school. The current trajectory of where we are headed is not good. If things remain status quo, I feel I will need to pull my boys from our hometown schools and choice them into a district in which these behaviors and disrespect are not tolerated. While I fully understand there are many things wrong in the world with policies, funding, state laws, et cetera, that can be a hindrance to all of this. We need to stop focusing on what we cannot change or fix and start honing in and being laser focused on what we can do in this school, in this district, in this town, that can change the direction in which our schools are going. This is not the time to point fingers at any one person, position, or policy. This is the time that we as a community, as parents and educators, must come together and have open, honest, intelligent, and productive conversations about how we fix this. A healthy fear of administrators needs to be restored. Respect for teachers, staff, and classmates has to become a baseline, non-negotiable requirement to being allowed in the general classrooms. My three main concerns are: One, what changes is the school able to make this year to address the current behavioral issues? Two, what changes will be made next year to address these high-needs populations of students to ensure that all students are having their educational needs met? And how do we do this without pulling position from another school in an already highly understaffed and overwhelmed district? Three, communication to all parents about the rules behind suspension and expulsion. What are the rules? Who makes them and how are they enforced? Parents have no information about this, and it's hard to understand what the school can and cannot do. I appreciate all of your time, and I look forward to working together to make O'Malley and Gloucester a place where we are proud to send our kids to.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Liz Brown. Live in twenty-five Exchange Street. I'm a Gloucester resident, and I'm a parent of a Gloucester student at Beaman Elementary School. I'm also a teacher in the local area. I've worked the last thirteen years in a variety of special education settings. I've had a number of experiences working with behaviors that stem from emotional deficits, social deficits, trauma, brain-based learning disabilities. I've worked in inclusion classrooms, sub-separate settings, and I have extensive experience working in therapeutic settings for students with significant behaviors. When we talk about student behaviors, I have a lot of firsthand experience. My daughter, like I said, is a second-grade student at Beaman. Her teachers have taught her how to notice and wonder about the stories they read. I have been following the story of O'Malley very closely for several years. I will be sending my daughter there, hopefully, and I've noticed a lot of things about the narrative there. The narrative largely focuses on how bad it's gotten, bullying behaviors, the destructive behaviors, the lack of accountability for students. And I am sure that we will hear more about that this evening, as we heard earlier so eloquently. I know from my experience as an educator that all behavior is communication. And I wonder what our students in this community are communicating to us. What are they telling us about what is working and not working during their school day? I wonder what our students are telling us about how their needs are being met or not met. I noticed that a big part of the story is about the eighth-grade class, how terrible they are and all of the terrible things that are happening. It's a talk on Facebook, it's talk on streets, the bus stop. And I wonder what their story is. I also heard that recently there was a really great day for the eighth graders. The Lanes Coven Theater came in. The community partnership was organized by their teachers, was supported by people in our community, both with funds and with time and effort. I've heard that the class was the most engaged, respectful, and happy that they have ever been on that school day. I wonder why? I wonder what it felt like to be students on that day. Did they feel trusted, respected? And did they feel like they knew something about the topic, that they had something to share? I wonder if they were able to communicate their needs in a more productive way. I noticed, also, this lesson was not in a scripted curriculum. Was not worried about numbers on MCAS. I noticed that this is a day where the ratio of teachers was higher than it normally is. There's more teachers in the building, working with the kids on that day. I noticed that this day had the larger community supporting them. That it was a day of community values, literature, story. And I wonder, how do we give our students more of that? We need to fix their behaviors, absolutely. I'm on board for that. But I also wonder and implore you to dream and think about how we can create more experiences for our community. We have a rich cultural history here in Gloucester. We have many opportunities and great people. And our students deserve to learn and be taught directly how to communicate, how to be part of a community. And it's clear that they need our help to do that, and I look forward to hearing and working in our community to see how that's gonna happen. Thank you.
Little suspect. Hi, Dan Graham, One Bigford Way. I'm a parent. I'm an educator at O'Malley. And I want to follow up on this conversation we're all having, because it's big news right now, that there is a major behavioral crisis in our community. So a lot of the attention is on O'Malley, and I want to stress that right now at O'Malley, we have in each group of kids who are early adolescents. If you look at Market Basket right now, there's suddenly signs up for the first time, talking about shoplifting. Those who've never been there before. You go into Get a Coffee right now, and you see signs that are saying, "You're being videotaped. Please don't steal." We have issues at the YMCA. We have a tough group of kids right now. This is a Gloucester issue. This is not an O'Malley issue. They happen to be our kids for, you know, the five days a week we get them. What I think needs to happen is acknowledgement of what is changing. It's not a problem, but I want to note that Mike Titus has been going to the YMCA, talking, "How can we collaborate?" He's retired, he's retired, right? How can we collaborate as a community, solve a community problem? What I'm proud of, being an O'Malley person, is that my principal is working with the community to address this. He's instructed his EPs to have increased community meetings, increased time spent on connecting with the kids, increased time spent taking the kids who are bystanders and teaching them how to be upstanders, how to uplift, because they are the silent majority. There are some challenging behaviors at O'Malley, but I've noticed school committee members, thank you all, you've been coming in and checking it out. You've been talking with us and coming to ground zero and seeing, oh, that's what you're faced with every day. Right? Ms. Casparolo's been literally in the trenches with me this week. She's been filling in in some positions that are understaffed and we need supporting. She's stepping up and together, communicating, working, looking at the problems together, finding solutions. We are making headway. It sounds like we're in crisis. We have a resource crisis right now. We have a hiring crisis. None of this is within any administrative control. We need people to fill these open positions, right? But in the interim, what I'm proud of is that the community is stepping up, and we are working together to solve these problems. I want to commend Mike Titus, I want to commend Emile, I want to commend Ben. You've all come into our school and worked with us to identify these problems, and then reached out to our community partners to make this a community issue. And that's why I'm confident, not only are we going to get through this, but when my daughter's in this school in three years, I'm gonna have her in that school. I'm gonna be proud of her education. I'm gonna be proud of the community she's growing up in. We've got this. If we continue down this path that we're doing right now, working together, communicating with the public, with each other, with the city, we will solve this. So let's not get bogged down in the darkness. And let's reflect on what are we doing now that's working and changing the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two people online. Deanna Benjamin, you can go first, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Hi, my name's Deanna Benjamin. I have two children currently at the middle school and also a fourth grader. I'm here tonight voicing my concern about these ongoing issues. What I'm looking for is urgent action, transparency, and communication from the administration and what the immediate plan is for change. The disrespect, the constant disruptions during instruction time, the bullying, and the illegal behavior has to stop. And accountability needs to be taken. The kids causing these issues have no fear of authority and continuously act out, due to the lack of discipline, or lack of consistent discipline, I should say. I strongly feel the precedent that has been set at the authoritative level the last few years is how we got to this place. When my oldest entered sixth grade, it was not like this, and I don't know what it is, but something has changed. A student should not be able to tell a teacher to F off and get away with it. The vaping in the bathroom, even the classroom, we're being told, and outside at recess is out of control. There should be a no-tolerance policy for vaping. I pick my daughter up after school sometimes for extra help, and the kids are actually vaping as they're walking out of the building. This is not what students... I'm sorry, I know kids who won't even go into the bathroom during the school hours due to the vaping and the bullying. I said it in my email last week, but the amount of fights I've seen on video on and off of school grounds is concerning. The violence they're growing accustomed to is not and should never be considered normal. This is a tough age, but they need to know that when they are in school, the rules are the rules. I understand that some parents give you pushback, but she shouldn't, but that shouldn't be the school's problem. If they don't like the punishment handed to their child, that is on them. But the kids need to know, when you're in school grounds, you must follow the rules or you get consequences. The punishments also seem to change depending on the child, meaning there's no consistency. My understanding is that this may have something to do with an IEP, a 504, but that needs to be explained to parents. When kids come home complaining about how disruptive kids are, or how they yell vulgar words and throw things at the teacher, and nothing happens, it sets precedence that that's okay, which it then becomes a spiraling effect on other students watching, including lowerclassmen. It's frustrating having children who enjoy learning and want to excel but are continuously interrupted day after day. I'm worried that due to the constant issues, it has affected the learning time, and will these kids be ready for high school? It is unfair to your educators who want to teach and not babysit unruly children. I have had private conversations with teachers and parents who are tired and burnt out. We lack a sense of community. Kids do not want to go to school. They want their parents to dismiss them. They need a connection with teachers, guidance counselors, and peers, and that lacks. It feels like survival mode for students and faculty at this point. Over ninety kids in eighth grade apply to the tech, and many are leaving on school choice or to private schools. And when you ask them why, most of the answers will be because of their experience. We need to keep Gloucester kids in Gloucester schools. I'm happy to hear there's a movement for special classroom behaviors, so the children who want to learn are not disrupted. But how do you plan to fund that with already a hiring issue and a budget problem in our schools? With all this said, I just ask the superintendent, the mayor, and the school committee to please not back down on implementing an immediate plan to get this school online. Bottom line, kids should feel safe at school. I can't even begin to imagine what it will be like in two years when my youngest gets there if I have seen such a drastic change over the last few years. I appreciate you taking the time to hear us parents out.
Thank you, Deanna. And then we have Jen Klopitoski.
All right, thank you, everybody. This is my first time doing this online. Apologies for not being there in person tonight, because I think I know almost all of you. My name is Jen Klopitoski, resident at forty-two Reynard Street here in Gloucester. I'm a mom of three, one in the high school, a current eighth grader, and a third grader in Beaman. Behind the mics this evening, you have or will hear a lot of angry parents or over email. Parents who are going to tell you that all the things you are doing wrong, and how and what you should do to fix this problem of, and I quote, "the O'Malley kids." And while many of them this evening are going to make very valid and correct points, my desire tonight is to instead bring forth a call to action. And what I'm about to say, I don't think is gonna sit well with a lot of people, and that's okay. We're here to get uncomfortable, because we've gotten too comfortable allowing these unsafe and harmful conditions to continue. I am calling upon you as administrators of the school. I am calling on parents of the students. I am calling on the chief of police. I am calling on the head of our Community Impact Unit, Cops and Kids. I am calling on our school resource officers, and I am calling on Mayor Verga and our city councilors. This problem we're here to speak about with the, quote, "O'Malley kids," is a systemic community issue. It's wrong of us to stand here and tell Mr. Titus, "It's all your fault," because it's not all his fault. It's the fault of this entire community. It's the fault of social media. It's the fault of our nation's overall attitude. These kids soak in absolutely everything around us, and that's projected into their everyday attitude and behavior. How can we expect them to respect the rules of our classrooms if parents at O'Malley drop off, don't even respect the rules of where their car is supposed to be? How can we expect them to respect the safety of other kids around them when our own city budget doesn't respect the need for school financing to keep tier-two specialists in our classroom or provide safety escalation rooms? How can we expect these kids to follow rules of the road and refrain from doing popawheelys in the middle of the street at Cars if our officers are nowhere to be found downtown? If we are not holding ourselves accountable as adults in the community to be the things we want our kids to be and hold them accountable for their actions outside the school, then Mr. Titus, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Odessa, and Ms. Mistranga are just fighting an uphill battle. Accountability is defined as being required or expected to justify actions or decisions to be responsible, which in turn, to be responsible is having an obligation to do something or having control over care or someone. It's part of one's job or role. It is our responsibility to be accountable for the actions of these children. I am calling to action the administration of O'Malley to hold our community, the parents, and themselves responsible for the actions of these select few children right now, today, who continue to be allowed to threaten the safety of the children and adults around them. And tell us what your plan is for today, not next year, because there are kids today who fear walking in those doors tomorrow. Thank you.
And no hands raised, other hands raised online. We will move on. Thank you all for those people who spoke this evening. Recognitions. Anything going on?
I'll give my update, but this is your time.
Yeah.
I went to the... But you wanted you to say something about that. On my mind, was the play at East Federal, that I went to. It was outstanding. The cast was terrific, and students did a wonderful job of finding Nemo, so really enjoyed seeing it, so.
Should I talk about today? So today, here at the high school, the Admiral of the Navy ROTC program that our ROTC is currently involved in came to review our cadets, which is a really cool thing to watch, and they lined up as if he was coming onto a ship. And it's, you know, there's all this pomp around it. And he was quite personable, and he was very complimentary, the Admiral of our band being there and our staff being there and other students being there. And he told his story of, it was really quite something, of being a Navy fighter pilot and fighting in Iraq, and then now doing this work after he could have retired because of the leadership potential of these students. So it was really, it was quite, it was quite something. A number of us were there, the mayor was there, and it was quite, it was quite enlightening.
Here's Rear Admiral Matthew Potter, and he also is in charge of all the officer training throughout the country, all the boot camp training throughout the country. Stationed in, at Great Lakes, in Chicago. But you're right, he's very effective individual, also very personable. And the students really thought, as I was walking out, some of the ROTC students said, "He's so friendly." He really was. But he was, please have the mayor there, and a few school members as well. But, you know, the ROTC program has always been a big part of Gloucester High School. It remains that. And I think that's an example, having a band there. As he said, often or typically, you'll have an iPhone or a phone playing music into the microphone. And we had Mr. Lundquist and the jazz band there, and they did a great job. Just a lot of support for our students and and the program, and also Chief Mark Robinson, who did some fantastic years, first year, so I appreciate that. It's great.
Add on to that, because we know the trouble we had, where we almost lost the program because of lack of enrollment and losing the instructor, and switching over to the Navy gives a lot of flexibility, so you have Marines, maybe your Coast Guard who could teach the class. And there was a display downstairs that showed some publications from years past, and one from nineteen thirty-five was celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of the ROTC school. Obviously, it wasn't this school at the time. It's probably South Grand before that, but we have a long tradition of ROTC in the school and military service in the city, so I certainly appreciated that you had the panel joining us.
The seasonably confused coffee house on the twenty-seventh was amazing at the Alex's, the chorus and the bands play, and it was obviously scheduled a while ago. And just phenomenal. I'm biased, because I have a kid in band and a kid in the chorus, but it was, it's always a phenomenal program. Paul and Jamie do an amazing job, the kids, and it was great.
Good things going on. Okay. Next item of business is the Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council, and with us, we have Jordan Mackey online. Thank you, Jordan, for being here.
Thank you. First, I'm gonna start off with the Interact Club Pizza Taste Off fundraiser. It's being held today. It's the annual pizza taste off. It's the sixteenth. Tonight at five to seven at the Cruzport. The tickets are ten dollars, and for children, they're five, and tickets can be purchased at the door, and all proceeds will be going towards the American Cancer Society. Next is upcoming elections. The elections for Executive Board and National Honor Society officers will be coming up soon. The Seala by Literacy was held today. All seniors taking a language were eligible to take the test. The senior banquet tickets have been sold this week. They're thirty-five dollars each. And the banquet is going to be at the Danvers Port Yacht Club on May twenty-eighth. The freshmen have been selling Easter eggs during lunches. They're three dollars for a small bag of candy, or five dollars for candy and a large egg. GHS Athletics, last night, the girls' lacrosse team, JV and Varsity, both had a game against August. The Varsity team battled hard but lost eleven to ten. They went into two overtimes. Skyberry scored eight goals. Meadow Anderson and Kyle Collins both scored one goal each. And our goalie Gabriella Martell had a great game with ten saves. The Varsity baseball team had a great, have had a great season so far, winning their first two games. And the Varsity softball team has also had a great season so far, winning their first three games. And then tonight, the Varsity tennis team, Varsity and JV baseball team, JV and Varsity softball team, all have games today, so good luck to them. And then lastly is the GHS Theater Program. The spring musical is James and the Giant Peach, which opens this weekend. It's about James, who is being sent by his conniving aunts to chop down their old fruit tree. He discovers a magic potion that results in a tremendous peach and launches a journey of enormous proportions. Suddenly, James finds himself in the center of a gigantic peach among human-sized insects with equally oversized personalities. The performances are April tenth at seven PM, April eleventh at seven PM, and April twelfth at one PM and seven PM. Tickets for adults are fifteen dollars. For students, GHS staff and seniors, they're going to be ten dollars at the door, and you can save up to twenty percent off and skip the line when you buy ahead on the website, gloucesterhydrama.blogspot.com. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Thank you for being here.
It is good.
Next item of business is the Consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they would like to reveal? Will we have to do the consent agenda? Wait, we're saying hi? Next item of business is deliberation on education issues. The superintendent's report.
Thank you, Nancy. So I'm gonna show just quickly a couple of photos from the NJRC. Saturday, Chief Mark Robinson there on the left. It is just blues. Rear Admiral Potter there. This is... They're receiving a medal, award rather, for being leaders and being leaders of their own crew, and also academically for high honors. And then also, here is the crew, the ROTC cadets. I don't know the official terms, but they're parading and being inspected by the rear admiral there. So you can't see within the distance here is the band playing, while they were presenting themselves. So just to quick on that, let me now switch to presentation for tonight. So first, I'll give an update from a number of things happening around the, our schools, as I always do. So, and we always, as we say in Gloucester schools, everybody matters. Everybody belongs. We'll talk quite a bit about that today, tonight rather, and every student learns. So I'll give my support, and then as folks have said, my ties myself are here to give an update on O'Malley. And we'll be able to respond, just in terms of just some steps to a lot of the questions folks raised, and a lot of issues people raised tonight, so. I got a good crowd online. It's fantastic. Really appreciate folks reaching out and speaking supportive of O'Malley, and we'll talk quite about that. But first, around our school, so Beaman, just finished up their MCAS preparations. And MCAS is happening across the district here and on ELA, and also math testing. Beaman's reporting that students are finding the new MCAS platform easier to navigate, and also allows them to have greater use of the universal accommodations that make their testing experience easier. So appreciate that from Beaman. Their run club, I think this is maybe the fourth year of their run club.
Third.
Third, third year of their run club for girls in grades three and four. Thank you to Hillary Rendazzo. Thank you to Hillary Rendazzo, who's leading that, and I think other staff probably helping out too. Your parents are involved, the students will train and they're running the Fiesta 5K again this summer, it's fantastic. Superintendent might run in that too, because these don't give out much. And then also, they're preparing, the fifth grade is putting on Amy Junior at Gloucester Stage. I believe that is tomorrow night and Friday night, and they presented a preview to the students. But Amy Junior, so looking forward to that this weekend, a lot of theater this weekend for the Gloucester schools. Plum Co updates, so their school play auditions started on April 7th, that's for fourth and fifth graders at Plum. Their wit and wisdom poetry contest is also underway, and they've been submitting, making submissions, goes until April 30th. And then Plum Co parent volunteer, Little Cop and Diana Shatford, they're now launching the Plum Co Run Club. Which is fantastic, and they're going to be twice a week in the afternoon, so good, good news and good ideas, travel. Want to be like, share and talk about, that's excellent for Plum Co getting on the running trail there. East Veterans, so as folks know, backyard growers, this is growing season, or beginning of the growing season, kind of. But our backyard growers, our friends and partners there are in our schools and helping out our students. Recently, they were at East Veterans and partnered with Appleton Farms to share maple granola, which was made with maple syrup collected and made at Appleton Farms. And then they're also introducing every month, Gloucester students to a seasonal locally produced food. Well, basically, really trying to expose them to help them understand about where food comes from. And the cycle, full cycle of growing and producing and eating. So appreciate backyard growers. West Parish, they've been, they always celebrate opening day. And so in this, they were not only invited to wear a baseball attire, but to practice their math skills through baseball-themed game and other class activities and home run problems. I missed this, but there was a Red Sox photo game to the lobby, which must have been a lot of fun. And then also backyard growers, I was out to West Parish yesterday, excellent work there. Preschool is having their information nights. The next one is Tuesday, April 15th, so next Tuesday, for parents of three and four-year-olds who are interested in rolling next year. And there's, that's being advertised on Facebook and out in public. But I want to bring in new parents and get them enrolled or registered for preschool. Also to preschool, very exciting news, Chronicle, so WCDB Channel 5, new show Chronicle came for a visit and filmed with backyard growers. I noticed they're planting lettuce with the preschoolers for salad day. Didn't know it was salad day, that's what it was. And preschool is honored and thrilled to have the TV new show come, and that'll be shown, I believe, late in April, early, maybe. Don't know the podcast yet, but we'll get it out to folks, so. Big news, big success. Some O'Malley updates, so our elementary chorus around elementary schools, four schools converge on O'Malley multiple times a week to, this year, just starting this year, to have the chorus practice. And they're going to start having their chorus concerts forever, elementary chorus concerts on May 17th. And then also O'Malley Academy's Spring Program started on March 24th, so I guess a couple of weeks ago. And as we know, O'Malley Academy is one of the strongest things going in our schools. Such great leadership and support from Becky Mastandria, and then instruction from a whole bunch of different staff from O'Malley, and also surrounding partners, so they're offering Drama Club, it goes with Studio Art, Arche is helping out with that, Engineering Club, that's new work to O'Malley Academy. Sewing, they often offer cooking and nutrition, they will again. Self-defense, Garden Club, Teen Fitness, Lego Club, Yoga, and also, of course, Sales Student Leadership Council. So just really, really appreciate all the hard work that goes into producing O'Malley Academy, support from Gloucester Education, support from our bus drivers as well, who staff the late buses, and then, of course, from our mainly staff who's helping out the kids, so. We are having a Teen Health and Wellness Fair on April 30th at Gloucester Fieldhouse. That's co-sponsored by our Mental Health Ambassador, their student group at Gloucester High, their Gloucester Health Department Leadership Council, and we sent 50 vendors and local businesses to be there to help students with learning about health and wellness. So of course, school members and others, including the mayor, invited to stop by. So I appreciate the partnership, the leaderships are, first of all, the Mental Health ambassadors, and they really appreciate the partnership of the Health Department and the Youth Leadership Council, so that's great. Some big news from Gloucester High, there's Principal James Cook there, it looks like younger days for him in that one, great photo there. But after nine years as a principal, Gloucester High, he's decided to move on. Not too far away, probably to the second or third floor here, he's going to return to being English teacher at high school, which is a tremendous move for other students to come. Really appreciate him, and he's been a fantastic principal, someone who leads with deep intellect, deep concern and care for all of our students. And then also really understands the ins and outs and details of what is probably the most, one of the most complicated positions in any school system, and that's the high school, high school principal. Very challenging position in so many ways, but he's done it with grace and expertise. And I'll miss working with him, but I will, I will look forward to seeing him with our students in the classroom. I would say this, I said this publicly as well, is there are not many high school principals, I think, who'd be really well positioned to take on, move to a teaching job in the same school. It's, but James Cook, I've got to make a note about, he will handle it with grace, he will handle it with a lot of support of where the next principal is. Be nothing but a help to them, but he will also do a fair, very good at staying out of the way. He'll do it so well, and we're pleased that he'll still be part of our community. There you go. This is, so also, one of the bigger deals in the school system is hiring the high school principal, especially if you leave one high school in the community. So it's already underway, we had posted the position last Friday. I was going to go with that, we've got outreach to staff and families. We had a staff meeting yesterday to get input on the strengths and challenges that face Gloucester High, and also leadership qualities for the next principal that the staff was looking for. We'll have a family meeting on Monday evening, and then both of the input from those meetings will then go into surveys, will allow more people, as many people as want to participate in the surveys, to sort of rank order, but give input on all the ideas that folks have come up on, which one's the most important to them. They'll help us develop a leisure profile, that will be used to select candidates who should be interviewed. That profile will also be used to develop the questions that we ask for the interviews, and also assess the candidates as well. So the input from staff and families will really, you know, form the basis of the assessment of the candidates. And then, this is, this is an aggressive timeline, this is, need to move quickly on this. This is the time where folks are interviewing and making decisions about their position next year, so we want to make sure we move quickly. There will be a search committee made up of students and family members and staff and some administrators, both from Gloucester High and from across the district, and then they will select finalists through an interview, an interview process, and then they'll hand that off to the finalist interview committee, and that interview committee makes a recommendation. I'll be part of those final interviews, but they'll essentially recommend to me, who they think is the best candidate. It's ultimately the student's decision to recommend that chosen candidate to the school committee as well. We're aiming to have that completed by May 14th to 28th. And we'll do our best to regulate that. Right to about the process.
Real quick then, a few people reached out, said, hey, they might want to get involved in that, they need to, there was an email that went out, who should they contact?
Yeah, so another email about the families again tomorrow.
Okay.
About the meeting on Monday, but really just email yourself or really Kelly Coy. Okay, my assistant, and that's, you know, or Superintendent at GloucesterSchools.com, either way. We've got a number of staff and parents who already raised their hand, but, you know, happy to have more. And then we'll name the committee right here, April 15th is when folks will know who the committee is, okay? Okay, so I'll be next week.
In the spirit of transparency, is there any part of this process that will be available by Zoom or open to the public where they can observe?
Probably not open to the public, but we will have time where the finalists will be at Gloucester High and have time to meet with family members, staff, that sort of stuff, also see the school as well. So those finalists, you know, whether it's two or three finalists, we'll have access to and have time to be asked questions, answer questions, of course. Yeah, I was going to say one thing on that is, oh, the process is confidential up until finalists are named and they're named publicly. And we do that because, you know, most folks won't get through the process, and very few need finalists. We do it to honor their professional privacy, often folks, you know, go through the process, you know, and don't have and then so, you know, rather than, they want to keep that private to them, so we try to respect it.
So not until finalists?
Yeah.
One finalist, two, there are finalists.
Yeah, the search committee will recommend, our minor finalists, they believe are the best for the job. That's typically two or three, and so at that point, when the finalists become public, then each of them will come to the high school and have a day here, it's exactly the same thing we did on the O'Malley process. And have chances to students, we staff, it's family, this sort of thing, yeah.
And who will develop the expectations and the interview questions?
Yep, so that will be the, the search committee will, they'll do it based on the leisure profile, which is, of course, a consolidation of all the input from family and staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
The search committee, is there going to be district leadership team by the committee?
Yeah, there'll be district leadership, so typically, we've gone in the past is, I mean, I'm just, the most recent example we have that's comparable is the O'Malley principal hiring process, and I think in that search committee, so the first, you know, first committee, Amy Pasquale was on there, and then probably at least one other principal, and it could also be a, it'll be a high school administrator most likely, but there also might be another just part of the share of that as well. Typically, in the finalists, that's what you'll have more, so Mike Jarvis will be on that, myself, Amy Pasquale, but you'll have some folks who are on the search committee team also be on that as well. So yeah, they're pretty large teams, if you think about 14 or so for the, for the search committee, you know, just the first round of interviews, and then a little smaller group is still at least 10 for the finalists committee as well, so you get a lot of good input, but most importantly, have a range of perspectives. And then James and the Giant Peach, only is Beeman doing their show this weekend, but also the high schools as well. And that's starting tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, also April, Friday, 7:00 PM, and then Saturday at 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM. And don't you wonder how a giant peach can grow to the sky? Yes, it's a great question, we can find out this weekend, so there we go. This literally was one of my favorite books growing up, I'm very excited for this, so, and it is a musical now, which is made. Because there are possible events, so this is a good transition, so as folks mentioned tonight, you know, supporting Gloucester youth is a community-wide, I mean, my role and also importance. And so because of the work that Spoke Side today, we are having a community-wide forum about Gloucester youth and adolescents, really focused on middle school age, that's next Tuesday, April 15th, it will happen at O'Malley, but really looking at a whole community effort and perspective on this, so Mayor Verne will be there, representatives from the YMCA, schools, obviously, Gloucester Police Department, Gloucester Department of Health, and also local businesses as well, and we present to, really do a lot of what folks are talking about and asking about. So really want to hear and listen to community concerns about young adolescents' behavior in our community, learn what, to help folks learn what's being done in our community and schools as well, educate folks on that. Help folks also understand about what this age is and what it means to be this age. And then also brainstorm ways that community, community folks, and that means individuals and agencies and organizations, can work together to really support our youth. It is, as we'll talk about for tonight, just a little bit, it is a very challenging age. I think of it, and I was taught this a long time ago, an age where young children, young kids really, are just learning to deal with all the adult issues that they're going to deal with for the rest of their lives. And that means a lot for an adult, it's even more for a person who's just becoming, moving from your childhood, really, to adolescence, so. But there's great things that you can do and accomplish, it's also a great thing that we can support them with, so. I hope folks will be at that, and then more information about that will go out to our, through our networks, school networks, all our families, but also through other channels as well, yeah.
Just one thing I'm noticing is that this is, you're inviting students as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, just sort of the, like, I want to wind that out, this is for students as well as families and stuff.
Definitely, yeah, 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 great. And then, we don't need that, so that's a good segue to, Principal Tice and I are here, I mean, from this, we're going to move into the next, which is an update on O'Malley. And a number of the issues and questions folks have raised, have been raising by reaching out to us. And so first of all, want to really appreciate family members and other community members who reached out to Principal Tice, myself, and others of the school committee. I've been able to talk to a number of those folk, I actually responded to in conversations or meetings with those folks who reached out, and really appreciate their honesty and their concern and care. So tonight, we're going to go through a bunch of things, I'm going to start off with just some framing and intention, intention for tonight. We're going to cover a lot of ground, okay, and it's complicated ground, I'll talk about that in a moment. We will always start with strengths, as folks already alluded tonight, committed strengths in both O'Malley and with our young adolescents, okay? We'll talk about expected and unexpected behavior at this age, but also at the school. We'll help folks understand disactions and consequences and processes we take at the school, okay? We'll talk about, a little bit about their rules schools have to live by when it comes to disciplinary action, okay? And help educate folks on that, talk about what we're doing now, and then also we'll talk about what we need to continue to work on, okay? So lots to cover. I do want to have a couple of intentions tonight, just to share with folks, and I want to first start with that, start with a whole lot of compassion and understanding. As I said already, it's a challenging time, difficult time, confusing time for a young adolescent. And when I say young adolescent, I mean sort of 11 to 14-year-olds, sixth through eighth grades, I think, okay? But also a whole lot of compassion for our families, for our teachers, for our staff. Folks are working really hard, families are always, our teachers and staff always are. And these are challenging times outside of school, and one of the challenging times outside of school, our schools reflect our greater society, so the challenging times inside our school, okay? And so just want to always remind us folk that we're coming and approaching this, always want to approach this with compassion and understanding for all the work and all the goodness that everyone has, while also acknowledging that things are hard. We're going to try to, Mike and I, or Principal Tice and I, are going to try to reflect actively a wide range of perspectives, okay? Mike, of course, is in the building every single day, working with students and families and staff. I've been here a whole bunch at all, my background is a middle school teacher, so I feel like I understand the age quite well, but I've had conversations with parents, with staff, with kids as well, and I feel like I've got a pretty good, from listening from folks, I have a pretty good understanding as well, so we'll reflect as best we can what we've heard and then widen to perspectives. We won't get it just right, though, so please have compassion for us, because we won't say it all right, we won't, we won't get just credit as the way you feel, perhaps, but I hope that what folks are feeling and seeing, experiencing will be reflected in a lot of what we covered in them, okay? We're going to share what's happening, and also try to educate people about the complexities of what's happening, okay? That's a way to help people understand and the nuance, because it can be simplified in so many ways out in the public and in conversations, and not one colleague, but also one's, one's families, and this is complex for them, okay? That's not to excuse it, but just to help people understand. We're going to share credit with a lot of folks, okay, because everyone's working hard, and everyone's doing their best, okay? At the same time, we will try to remind folks that we all have responsibilities to improve, or work with our students, every day, every week, okay? And we'll work together on that, we already are. And then the other piece is this, I deeply believe that we do the best within the systems and structures we have. And if we want to do better, we have to improve and strengthen the systems and structures we have. But fair amount of tonight will be talked about that, okay? Systems and structures, so, okay? You know, and so that can be a schedule, that can be a class size, that can be, you know, communication interaction, you know, communication systems or structures, okay, for the families, okay? That can be how a place is organized, a school or a business, okay? But those things really sort of constrain or allow folks to do their best for them. Often, quickly, if we want to improve something, it's not just about the people doing more, okay, and that better. You have to look at what's helping them do well and also what's hindering them, okay, so that's part of it. But ultimately, you keep on working hard to get better on them, so. I'm going to hand it off to Mike now. Um I'm going to hand it off to to Mike now, actually. One more thing about tonight's theme is yes and. So you hear us talk a lot about yes and. And that's just a way of describing that, you know, there are a lot of things going on here. So I'm just describing some of the yes ands and you'll you'll then see the reflective in our um in our presentation tonight. So yes, most of O'Malley's students are doing well. They are engaged learners and they follow the rules. And more students are typical are acting out and demonstrating atypical, unexpected behavior. We'll talk about what that means tonight, okay? But both those things um exist. We have to hold them both in our hands as we talk and work on this together. So yes, O'Malley staff administrators are doing a lot to support students and hold them accountable. And we need to improve our systems and structures so we can do better. Yes, young adolescents are showing challenging and unexpected behavior at O'Malley. And they're also doing the same outside of school and homes and neighborhoods and at businesses. That's why it's really important that we have a community effort and grow community-wide effort to support our 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 young adolescents. Yes, parents and families are supportive, and we do need just the support from parents both inside and outside of the school. Talk about that a little bit tonight. Then yes, families in Gloucester face many challenges and difficult circumstances for generations. Challenging for challenges for families in our in our community isn't new, okay? Now, that that that's relevant, because students always bring the struggles they have at home or outside of school to school, okay? And we support them with whatever they bring. Okay? We're going to focus tonight really just on a few of these. So just the first two, you know, focusing on O'Malley there. And then a little bit about how um you know, we think uh we we want to work with parents and families to be supported, okay? But we'll focus on those three tonight. So I think this is where I hand it off to Mr. Titus.
Thanks, Superintendent Lomas.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um let's all thank the folks uh who have reached out and uh met with Superintendent Lomas and myself and talked with us. Um it's it's, you know, I think focused a lot of work that was already ongoing. Uh but really, it sort of allowed us to um, you know, get uh everybody in the room together and start to share the work that was ongoing, but make it more transparent. So. Um and we do want to always start with the strengths, right? So there's a lot of good things that are going on. Uh we had some school committee members here at O'Malley the other day. Um but we do have students on on any given day. I would feel confident at walking a parent into any random classroom to show them that the kids are overall sitting in their seats, engaged in work, good teaching is taking place, and um learning is happening. Our house system, small class sizes, right? Um last year's budget season was not a favorable one for schools. Uh priorities that I put to that was to maintain that uh our house system so that our students had a smaller sense of community and what is ultimately a much larger school than what their elementary is for. Um and that house system really does work. Um in 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 the transit, especially in the transition from fifth to sixth. Uh our our science center continues to be a crown jewel that we have. Um engagement is exceedingly high in there. Students working with uh professional-grade lab materials um in and exploring science in a way that is really unrivaled, I think, probably on the North Shore, um maybe even in a lot of high schools, uh but we have it at a middle school. We do have a lot of support. Uh we have guidance councils, adjustment councils, de-assisted principals. Um all working in teams and coordinating to support the staff, to support the students, and oftentimes directly supporting students and families. Uh our counselors are, if they're not communicating with a family, they're with a student or they're in a classroom. Uh where they're meeting, we're meeting as teams to try to collaborate to figure out how we work some of our tougher cases, because um I know a lot of people are going to want a simple answer around, we're going to start suspending more. Um I want to be really clear that it's not that simple, because we're working with really fully complex, authentic human beings, even if they are really twelve. Um they are just as complex as anybody else sitting in this room or on Zoom. So that's what we're trying to work with. Um and sometimes we need to collaborate on that. And uh we have great um non-academic uh classes during the day of specialists, great academic classes. And we have um our actual O'Malley Academy program that Superintendent uh Superintendent Lomas already mentioned. Um which, you know, I I really can't advocate enough for the importance of that for kids this age. Giving them somewhere else to go, so they're not finding themselves somewhere around the community unsupervised um and testing their boundaries, right? They have a supervised structured place to be until uh two and a half hours after the school day ends. Yeah, so again, sticking with our strengths, um again, any random class students are going to be working diligently. Uh there are a lot of friend groups. I know here we've heard a lot about bullying, we've heard a lot about name-calling. Um going to the lunchroom and as a lunchroom, anybody might expect where groups of friends are talking, catching up. Um one of the drawbacks of the house system is they, that might be the only time they get to see their friends. Uh and they and they are very excited to see their friends in those moments and they have great relations, respectful interactions. Yep, it's, we we do have a handful of students. I'm working as part of acknowledging what's going on where um they do struggle with that. The vast majority of the students at O'Malley give most uh me, staff, a good morning. Have a nice weekend. At the end of the day, at dismissal, um eye contact, everything you would expect. A a, you know, young uh man or woman growing up, getting ready to take on the world. And those chances that Superintendent Lomas was saying, um how they would present themselves. And, you know, our our kids are very engaged in in and out of the academics. Um phenomenal drama program where students are finding their people and their interests uh that they wouldn't in the normal school day. Um we have our chorus and our band program. Um and and, you know, we have Dungeons and Dragons uh being offered. And that's for the, you know, not traditionally, that that's very hard for those kids to find their people in middle school spread out and we, you know, we offer those spaces. So um there's a lot of great things going on. And uh, you know, there is also a reality, and this is not to talk about some of the more egregious behaviors, which we'll we'll hit on. But also, um anybody that has had a middle schooler knows, there is a lot going on with them at this age. Um that makes it very difficult for them to sometimes um behave in the way that we would really just want them to. Uh brain development, uh their brain new, we've got some new neuroscience on this, is going through rapid shifts in what they call uh growth and pruning. Their brain is smoothing out and growing gray matter, making neural connections and then pruning down and and connecting and making, you know, solidifying the uh really strong, important connections as their brain sees them. Uh this is why relationships are so important to them. This is why they're so relational. And what we would ask them to um not worry about the drama, which is hard for them, because it's a very strong neural pathways for them right now. Um and so there's that's never going to change, right? That's just the biology of of human beings growing. All those shifts, um puberty, um the awkwardness, uh I learned early on my career from an occupational therapist. I found this interesting, that one of the reason why you will often see middle school boys slouched is and and seemingly acting disrespectful is uh they are actually growing at such a rate, their core cannot comfortably support the new length of the limbs and all these things, right? So it seems like it's lethargy and everything else. They're they're, you know, two to three inches in a year is a lot for a middle schooler to grow through. The emotional development, um they are feeling things they haven't felt before. And if we don't help them um learn new vocabulary to identify those more nuanced, complex emotions, they're going to struggle with that. It's going to create frustration.
Yeah, no, sorry, I'm corrupting just because I'm I'm just kind of thinking to myself, uh like, um. You know, it's it's almost like I'm putting, it's listening to you and and thinking about my own experience with my kids at O'Malley and all that stuff. I'm thinking, you know, we don't. Probably shouldn't do it, but if you don't put kids in cycles, you've got kids that never cause a problem, you know, they're in school every day respectful. You've got kids that occasionally, yeah, when they act out of their, I think you used the phrase, the term. Um in the community, maybe just out there, kind of not doing exactly what they should be doing all the time. And correct me if I'm wrong, but is there, it almost sounds as though there's a group in a third cycle that is a step beyond that. And that's, I think that, is that, is it safe to say those are the ones that the focus, you know?
Right, and yeah, and and I think uh we're going to talk more about that, okay? And we're going to talk about, um, I think. You know, the thing we want to caution here, and I know you're you're saying it as well, is to not oversimplify um what we're doing. But if if we were to paint some broad categories here, um understanding this nuance, I'd say you probably hit it on the head, okay? Um and what we're going to try to do is pull apart, and this is getting into the piece of uh expected. And you'll see as we have it labeled in here, expected misbehaviors. It's still not necessarily things we want the kids doing. But typical uh developmentally appropriate misbehaviors related to what we're presenting right now. And then there's unexpected misbehaviors, right? And these are the, these are the more um extreme behaviors. These are the, these are the more challenging ones um that take up a lot more resources and a lot more bandwidth in the school.
I think for this, and we'll move on to that in just just a moment, is, I mean, if I have one of these things going on that's on the slide here, I'd be really cranky. Okay, you know, like I'm kind of cranky, not much fun to work with. You can ask Amy, okay? But our our adolescents are, go through all these things on any given day. And they have very few tools in order to like to process and understand what's going on. If I have a headache, I know what's going on, right? You know, if I have, or if I if I, you know, have something that really makes me sad, I know what's going on, and I can mask that or I can overcome it. But these folks are getting, you know, like a lot, a lot of just things coming out all the time, right? It's not to excuse behavior. It's just to have everyone understand part of what folks may not understand, since there's a lot going on. And so and and that and that's, and these different pieces are some of the cause of behaviors, okay? Right? So let's talk about expected misbehaviors, unexpected misbehaviors. Because all these things are going on, we expect them to test limits. We expect them to be impulsive. We expect them to not listen, okay? Because they're trying to strike independence and that sort of thing. So that does something, expected and unexpected. So my my.
Yeah, and 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 to be clear, and I want to just emphasize what Superintendent Lomas said. When we say it's an expected misbehavior, it does not mean we allow for it, okay? Our job, though, is to anticipate those things when we're maybe developing a lesson plan or when we're thinking about um our supervision at lunch or recess. And these are things that we'd be derelict in our duty and be demonstrating a lack of adolescent growth and development if we didn't anticipate some of these things are going to happen, right? That it is, it it has since everybody in here was their age and it and it will continue to be. Um but some of these, you know, we we, what we have here is just some broad categories. I don't want, again, none of this is all uh it's not meant to be an exhaustive list of things you might get, but it's really to just draw a comparison between within these categories. What are the things that we would expect to see in this school that makes it uh, you know, day-to-day, let's call it an exciting place? Okay, in a in a challenging place uh versus versus things that really, really get in the way of of uh the education and maybe create those safety concerns. So the simple kids at this age are going to question authority. Uh you're going to get, well, why do I have to do that? Right? And you might even, parents might be feeling that at home, right? Just we, I've been asking you to do this every day for the last three months. Why are we still asking that, right? That is, that is a kind of built-in piece of their their brain anatomy right now. Um unexpected misbehavior related to that would be a flat-out oppositional refusal to do something. It's not a, it is in your face, I'm not doing that, right? Um especially when it's opposed to a a an authority figure, okay? That makes it very difficult to run a classroom. That can make it difficult to um, you know, keep control in in a, let's say recess or in a a less unstructured or less structured uh setting. Yeah, the test rules is the, this one is about being out of class. Kids take too long in the bathroom, sometimes executive functioning, right? Um they're there, they were wandering, they decided, you know, I'm going to get a drink of water too, even though the pass wasn't also get a drink of water, but I'm thirsty now, why would I go? And and so they, you know, they're just making these decisions, and now they're out of class for a little bit too long. We expect that, we have to correct that with them, we have to help them with their executive function skills. Uh what we don't expect is would be a student to this, especially to uh middle school level, to just leave the building. I'm going to scum and skip school, okay? Um that happens very, very rarely. Um and it does, but but that is a a very unexpected misbehavior that we would see at a at a middle school. Um and I don't have to go through all of these, right? But um it is important to just draw some sys, some distinctions. You cannot walk into a middle school um in this country. And I'm, I'm not going to bet a lot of money on this, but I would bet a fair amount of money that that you will not see some force play in the hallways during a transition. That is going to happen. We don't want them to do that. We tell them not to do that. We say someone's going to get hurt. Um it's not appropriate, and we correct it and we hold them accountable if it's repetitive. Um but we, again, we expect that. Um we don't expect fights and assaults, okay? Um they happen. I think they feel like they happen more now, because unfortunately, they're often captured on a cell phone video. Um when they happen outside of school, when they happen, when they happen inside of school, uh they happen right after school, okay? Um and then they get replayed, okay? And they, that video sort of burns an image into our brain that is outsized compared to what we say, oh, did you hear those a fight yesterday? That's different now when we're seeing it played out and it's upsetting and justifiably so, right? Um then I'm not going to go through all of these, but this is when we start talking about um, we're not trying to downplay expected misbehaviors. That's sort of what you signed up for when you became a middle school educator. It's these unexpected misbehaviors that we want to spend a little bit more time talking about.
Yeah, we will want to, we're seeing more unexpected misbehaviors. Let's be clear about that, right? Um, you know, as you go further down here, you know, um you know, that's of those things, but they're happening, okay? We are seeing more kids, you know, vaping, uh and more adolescents vaping, both inside of school, outside of school. And that's instead of that, instead of the typical experimentation, which you'll see at this age, kids who are addicted, okay? Addicted to nicotine, okay? Uh that sort of thing. Um so and and that's what's different, okay? We'd say there a couple, three, a couple, three years ago, okay? Um we also are probably seeing, you know, more of expected misbehaviors. Um and and that, and well, but it's hard to quantify those. We'll talk about quantities, especially of the uh the things that lead to, you know, a more serious consequences in a in a little bit, we'll share some of the numbers and data. Um but that's the sense that that folks have.
Uh and I don't want, and I'm not trying to overstate the obvious. That's, can we go back to that last slide?
Yes.
The unexpected misbehaviors, that's the thing that people.
No, I would say, I would say actually both, honestly. There is, you know, I mean, I I would take, you know, sort of the level of, listen. The level of stability or the greater society is less, okay? It has, um it's for for lots of reasons, okay, which I don't need to get into, okay? When that's happening, our greater society, our schools, our students and our young people reflect that, okay? So I I don't want to, you know, and I don't say that to point fingers, I just want to be real about it, you know, and and so there is more of that. And that's really, really hard um for uh our staff, okay? Um at the same time, um it was always a little more, we're also seeing it's harder to make an impact on changing them. Especially for, you know, a smaller group of kids, that sort of stuff. But the consequences aren't necessarily changing the behavior. In the past, um you know, um it probably did more easily. So that's another piece of this.
And um I'll get into it later on.
Yeah, so then I'm going to share with folks just, you know, that folks respond, how do they respond, okay? This will explain perfectly every single time, but this is how folks respond to to any of that, the misbehavior we just talked about.
Those expected misbehaviors, um we often internally refer to as a classroom managed behavior, okay? This is, this is a thing that is part and parcel of being a middle school educator. Um and most of our teachers have a a uh, you know, a toolbox uh to address some of these things. So, you know, um we see that, we see the expected misbehavior, it's just going to be addressed by the teacher or the staff who saw it. You know, it might be during transitions, teacher's just out supervising the hallway, they're going to go and address it. Uh things teachers might do, they they can uh close proximity to a student, right? You might have asked for for a student to stop talking with their friend from a classroom room. Uh so well, now what you're going to do is you're just going to close proximity and you're going to ask them again a little bit more closely, a little bit. So instead of escalating it, right, there's, there's teacher moves, okay? These are classroom management um moves that a teacher can make. You might have a class, a conversation with, you might tell a student, say, in the classroom, not go into the hallway, right? Not kicking me out of class, you're just saying, I need to have a conversation with you, away from everybody else, let's have a conversation, okay? Uh and then teachers uh are empowered to apply their own consequences um as they see fit, right? It it might be um simply asking for and receiving an apology for the behavior. Um it might be asking the student to redo the behavior in the um so that it's no longer a misbehavior, right? Um very, very simple thing is, I need you to go back and enter the classroom appropriately. Because the kids all, because they just came from P E, they're still talking about who won dodgeball, and now they're entering the classroom with energy. That's really not classroom energy, right? So you might just ask them to stop and come through and do it that way. Um, you know, just getting a little bit more there, if it's repetitive. They're certainly welcome to hold the student after school for detention. Um sometimes we have the houses and houses may have a day that, you know, Monday, you know, this is your day after, so you'll do the house attentions, things like that. I think we want to communicate um with with families and then the teams, right? Um so, you know, you want to loop in guides counselor, adjustment counselor. Um, you know, the the behavior that you're seeing might not be approved for the classroom. It might also be on the student's IEP that it's a goal they're working towards, right? Um so it still gets addressed, right? But now we want to loop in somebody like uh Mr. Graham spoke earlier, because he's working with that student and that's something for them to talk about the next time. And of course, an assistant principal or myself can be looped in if necessary. And sometimes that's just for awareness, right? Not necessarily for additional consequences.
Can you explain the differences between the counselor and an adjustment, I'm sorry, a guidance counselor and adjustment counselor and how their roles are different?
Yes. So a guidance counselor is sort of a more of a generalized school counselor. They might, they, they have a caseload of, in our school, the whole grid, okay? And so any student that may be having a, a tough day or experiencing a temporary difficult situation might have check ins with them. They, they may coordinate some academic, non-special education related services. Just, hey, you know, the kid came to me and they said, it's really hard when X, Y, and Z happens in the classroom, can we try this for them? Kid might be trying to navigate a difficult relationship, right? I was friends with them, I don't know that we're friends with them anymore. Again, as we talked about that previous slide, that's a really big deal for a middle schooler that I might be losing a friend, so that they're sort of help them through those everyday things like that, right? They also do some outreach, generalized for attendance and things like that. A school adjustment counselor, okay, is, is a little bit more specific generally, not exclusively, but generally services, IEP goals that are laid out in usually the C grid of an IEP. So the student may have a behavioral, been diagnosed with behavioral disability or may have significant ongoing challenges with self-regulation. You know, that could be anything from, you know, a student with autism spectrum, right? That, that is, you know, there's really certain things that they show in flexibility about. And so the adjustment council is working a little bit more tailored specifically to enhancing that social flexibility. Or it could be anxiety and that, but the idea there is an adjustment council is working with a student who, what they're experiencing prevents them from accessing the curriculum. It's not just a bad day, right? There's generally a more intensive diagnosis that is, is saying, without some sort of counseling that is school-based, school-related, okay? The kid's gonna have a very hard time building the skills to independently navigate the classroom.
Are they more involved in disciplinary actions or, you know, when?
No. And as you'll see, as we get into some of these other things, you know, that may be a time when we're gonna call a counselor to help because the student may be, you know, the behavior, okay, we, is what's causing it. And we had someone speak before about, about behaviors communication, okay? The genesis of that behavior is really important. If it's, if it's rooted in a disability, we may need the counselor to come in to do some processing, but they're not gonna administer the discipline, right? So we're working as partners for the administrator, better understand the genesis of it, what, what's an appropriate consequence. If it's ongoing, it's not, how do we help the student understand? Discipline without education doesn't help, that's not gonna change any behavior. If a student does not understand why there's even the consequence that they're understanding or that they're receiving, it's, it's not gonna change the behavior. So, so we, we partner with them for that, but the actual discipline would always be administered by an administrator.
Sort of an advisory situation like?
Yeah, depending on the context. You know, I might, I might go through three or four instances where I don't need to call a counselor to help with any of the discipline. And then, you know, a situation arises where I'm calling in somebody just to partner on that, yeah. So we're still talking about expected misbehaviors, these could become chronic. They, these can become, there, there's obviously a spectrum of how disruptive some of these are. So, you know, there are times administrators are, are brought in, okay? We're gonna meet with the student, talk to them, see what's going on, we're gonna contact a parent and the family. Obviously, at this point, now they've been removed from class, right? If they're meeting with one of us, they're no longer in the classroom. It's, it's probably been decided that the behavior was disruptive enough that they were not responsive to the classroom management interventions or just, you know, we can't do this every single day. So we've hit a breaking point, so now we're gonna come up. We're gonna process them. The goal is always to return to class if a student is demonstrating in that moment that they seem ready to return to class, okay? That's a moral imperative and that's a legal imperative, right? It's both and. So we would not send a still escalated student back to class, all right? I just wanna be clear about that. If a student has been removed, they would not be sent back until this process is, you know, concluded. You know, if, if this is not the first time we're seeing this, or if, you know, it's kind of been ongoing, you know, we're gonna reach out to the parent, we're gonna inform them of the consequences, we're gonna inform them of the behavior. Might end up inviting them to a meeting, right? Say, we gotta, we gotta talk about this, cause we can't keep going on this one. Those, again, those are the expected. All right.
This is where things become more, not more intense or more complex and also the consequences fresh up.
Yeah. Can I just, can I ask one question, Mike? One of the things you said a few minutes ago, teachers are empowered to, so if kids under the expected misbehavior model is, and so teachers are, teachers can, can, can handle that on a case by case basis, is that what you're hearing you say?
Yep.
And the other thing is that, do you feel like, when I think about our role as school committee members, one of our roles is to make sure that you have the policies, procedures in place to handle this, either unexpected or expected misbehavior. But currently, do you feel like, well, there's enough in place to handle the expected level of issues that might be seen themselves in?
So, I, I would say policy wise, yes, okay? Where we're gonna get, and this is a point that I was gonna make earlier, but I'll make it now, is, as Superintendent Lama said, as we're seeing an increase for very complex number of reasons of these unexpected misbehaviors, okay? And, and we'll talk more about this. That is sort of overwhelming the traditional structures and systems we have in place to then address those expected behaviors as in the previous slide where there is backup available. As you'll see, as we get into these, these are very resource-heavy situations. What I mean by that is heavy in resources of personnel, in time, in effort, okay? And, and so as that increases, right? The, the bandwidth for the backup is a little bit less, okay? And that, that, so that's, as if it's not necessarily a policy issue, right? It's never circumstantial, and there's this system of structures that we're gonna talk about later. But hopefully improve that, okay? And, and free up some of that bandwidth to, to get to those things.
And I don't want you to think at any point, I'm asking a bunch of questions, but I don't want you to think I'm like, I, I clearly see what our goal is and what that's laid out here and that we need to do whatever we can to support that and make sure that you have what you need in a primary middle school to get, take care of some of this.
So when we get to these, these, these more extreme behaviors that are unexpected things, okay? This is gonna also is be a referral to an administrator, okay? Immediately what we're gonna do there is we're gonna pull a student out of class, maybe get to the thing you wanna pull them out, meet with them. Depending on what the infraction is, okay? Some of these are aggressive infractions, some of them are just disruptive, some are, right? So it's gonna depend on the next moves, but as we'll talk about in, in, why I say the policy is okay, oh, once we get to these, a lot of what we're doing is mandated by federal and state law, okay? So it's not really actually a whole lot of policy to be implemented in this end, right? So, but because that's coming up, it's very strict steps we need to take. So we do have to investigate, okay? I would love to tell you that simply a teacher report about a behavior is enough, okay? It may not be in that situation, okay? And that's not because we don't believe the teacher, that's just because of the procedures we need to follow to fact find and be able to make sure we're providing due process to the student, which is required by federal law. So now we're investigating, of course, again, at this time, our students are not gonna be in class while we conduct an investigation like this. They may be with Mr. Semenara and, you know, you've got a lot of behaviors support rooms. This may be a time where we tap a counselor, just as somebody that is not required to be standing in front of a class teaching and that can spend time with the student and depending on what happened, they might be still somewhat escalated from the situation. So they're there with a supportive adult while we're running the fact finding piece of that. You know, then we need to get in touch with the family, okay? We need to let them know as soon as possible, this incident that has taken place, where we're at in our process and what they can expect moving forward. We will apply appropriate consequences, consequences at that point. If we get to a point of suspension, okay, so it's like exclusion from school. There are additional steps, which I'm actually gonna go over to help educate a little bit, what the law allows for us to do, what it requires us to do, okay? If, if we decide that this is still just gonna be a, you know, that we have an after-school detention, we may still have them processed with an adult for a while. Again, this is where we do maybe tap a counselor, maybe we tap Mr. Semenara. Really need to spend a little bit more time on that education piece, right? There are consequences that are a little bit heavier that are coming. Mom and dad might be coming in, we need to understand why this happened, okay? Cause the consequence itself, and this is, I think, a shift from maybe what some of us know to be true from when we were in middle school, the detention itself was the lesson when we were younger. Without it, I don't know where the shift happened, but a detention issued without context, without education will not change behavior in, in students nowadays. So there's a lot of extra work that goes in, all right? I'm just saying, writ large, any kid might have a bad day, they fit in one of those other categories you're talking about, Mr. Melvin, and, you know, they get a detention and it's what you would expect. It's the tears, oh my God, and so much trouble, and I'm never gonna do this again. That almost never happens anymore, okay? It does, and those are the one and only times we have to deal with those kids. These other situations tend to be more ongoing and the reasoning for them is more complex. So this is why it slows down the process a little bit, just to be honest. We need to have all the relevant stakeholders on board, including the students. But the goal of the discipline is not to get our pound of flesh for the harm that was done to the classroom. The goal of the discipline is to change behaviors. So, cause if we're not changing behaviors, then this is a lot, it's a lot of that work.
Lauren has a question.
Just a quick question. Does the investigation happen while the student, I mean, the student's still in the building?
Yes.
Right, so the investigation, and when you say investigation, the teacher told you what happened, what has happened? What else is involved in the investigation at that level?
Yeah, so as we give, again, not all of these, but a lot of these situations are gonna move towards the exclusion from school suspension. It's usually short term, right? Which means anything less than 10 days. So what we are required, now again, just a little bit more on the disciplinary hearing piece. But we are required to give due process, which is a disciplinary hearing, and that really the function of that is twofold. The student and the parent have a right to express their point of view of what happened and provide any mitigating factors for the administrator to consider. Things that we should know that maybe led to the incident, could have been an outside school thing, might have been just something that happened. What I don't, what we never wanna get caught off guard is in that meeting, the student says, well, Johnny has been pushing me in doing this, and then, and then I lost and exploded. I really need to have done my due diligence and know what the ongoing conflict was prior to that meeting, because at the end of that meeting, I have to make a disciplinary decision, okay? So if I haven't done my due diligence and now I'm getting really brand new information, now consequences aren't issued, we return to business normal while I continue. So we, it's, it's really best practice to do all of that upfront.
And that's all happening that day in the building?
Correct. So things we do have to consider, it's part of that disciplinary hearing, it's part of the student's due process. A lot of these considerations are when I refer to those mitigating factors, these are things I'm talking about. Does the student have a behavioral disability? Those are really tough for people to, I think, see as disability in that moment when there was some harm done. But they're, they're real, and we have to consider, was this a function of a disability that the student has been diagnosed with? Do we have known mental health challenges with the student? Have, have they been hospitalized? Have they done partial programs? Is this an outburst, really a kid crying for help and not necessarily a malicious instance? Is this an ongoing thing that we're already working on? Again, is this, some of these are kind of connected? Is this a goal in the student's IEP to help, that we're working on regulating this behavior? So we know it's an issue that we're trying to work with? And, you know, what's the level of the family support, okay? Are they working with us, are they responsive? We really have gotten used to instantaneous communication in today's world, okay? But as you all well know, not everybody can just answer a text from the school or answer, you know, we're not generally texting. That's a matter of last resort, as we're trying to get in touch with the families, always gonna start as a phone call. But Superintendent Lama's also mentioned challenges, families. The number you have dialed is no longer in service. The number, the, the, the voicemail that you're trying to reach is full, okay? So we are going to try to go and exhaust everything that we can to engage that parent as immediately as we can. It has taken out of the board. And that is through no lack of effort on school personnel, trying to get the family member there. And, and when we are going to a suspended duty, the middle school level, I know they're, they're out and they're doing the thing, but when you've got a student that's just had the truth, that it is not a best practice to just say, leave a voice, like, and, and say, I'm sending your student home. And expect them to walk through the streets of Gloucester after they've just been excluded from school. And, right, we, we are still caring for the child, right? So they are under our care, so this process can be cumbersome. And it's, it's a legally dictated process that we have. And, and, and I will say, cause we're gonna, we're gonna be talking about action, we'll be doing things. I will say, for good reason, no rule exists for no reason. People at one point in time who had my position and sat in my seat essentially abused power, okay? And we're denying students their right to an education. So I designed the process to get slowed down to prevent folks like me, I'd like to think I wouldn't do it, but folks who hold my position not to abuse their power over an 11-year-old who may have a learning disability, to just exclude them from school, right? So that's where these things exist.
I think, I think we can go ahead and cover this here. So
Yeah.
So then, then move into the most serious situations and, and helping folks understand that a school isn't working alone. But whether it's high school or middle school, and this is not, not just in Gloucester, okay? But there's all different pieces and, you know, in, in, inside the school, whilst outside the school that we're looking to and need, you know, support from, okay? So the most serious situations, you're, you're gonna be working in school support, sort of developing a student success plan or in school counseling, Mike talked about that. You may be looking at special education services, so that's competing in team meeting. That's the educator would work with that student, but also family, okay? Could also put advocates. You may be reviewing or revising IEPs based on a disciplinary situation. You may need, may realize that a student needs additional services. Or in some cases, that the student needs a more direct place or an additional placement. So this is a response, can be a response to behavior, and then we'll repeat behavior, right? So they have to look at special education services. We are, we are dealing with and work with, this is not new in Gloucester, okay? And not new in, in, you know, most early environments, okay? But outside agency involvement, that's child requiring assistance, that's court involvement, that's the part of children and families, that'd be hospitalization, so partial or long-term. And also, of course, also work with the law enforcement, that includes across the police department as well as district attorney, okay? But in our most complex cases, you're, we are working out on all these levels, okay? Do it. And as Mike said, you know, those are other pieces that, these are pieces that will take time, take cooperation on the folks. And then the, and the other piece, the most serious is exclusion from school. So in school suspension, short-term suspensions, doing one to nine days, long-term suspension, or excluded from school, it's four to five days or for, you know, the remainder of the year. In all those situations that are longer term, we're also obligated to provide educational services to students, okay? So, you know, bygone days, you kick someone out of school, very little process first of all, but then also no responsibility. Okay, so, you know, bygone days, you kick someone out of school, very little process first of all, but then also no responsibility to provide for any education. We're still responsible for supporting a child's education. And in many cases, if it's a student with IEP or student disabilities, also providing services. Um, that respond to disability as well. So, again, these are the most involved, those complex cases, okay? Which we have more of in the past, but still a small percentage of students. I think the next slide here is, Mike, you can talk about this. So also folks wanting to know some data around what's been happening this year in terms of um. Uh, consequences and detentions and suspensions and all that stuff, so Mike's gonna share that.
What's the type of parent for this?
This is this year. Okay.
Yeah, so this is from September up through like last week. Um, yeah, like total current enrollment, six hundred and nineteen students. We had just just shy, I mean, this is, as I said, this is data from like last week, might have a little bit more. Um, five hundred meetings is of students being removed from class and being brought to our behavioral support room, which is run by Mr. Semenara. So. You know, I think that's, I'm providing that to show. I know there's a little bit of this idea that a kid can say anything and then nothing happens. They're being removed from class on a regular basis. Uh, and they're being, this is, this is, that those numbers show that that's. And I'd say, and that's with. Four of us. Doing that, right? Because we do, the teacher does not remove the student from class.
How many did it take, four of you?
Yeah, so it'd be me and three APs. We had over two hundred after school, uh, office detentions issued, okay, um, to about ninety-three students. That is, that does not account for um, any either house or teacher help detention. We don't, I don't, we don't track those centrally, okay? So if a teacher has just called home and said, I would like Johnny to stay, they need to stay after with me on Wednesday. Um, they're disrupting classes, getting any work done, and they need to stay with me and do some work, that's not included in that. We have had forty out of school suspensions, okay? That is not days. Because as we said, those days, the 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 length of a suspension can vary, but we have had forty. Um, of those discipline, a little bit more because of those, but we had over forty of those disciplinary hearings. Parents involved discussing behavior, uh, suspending the student and then having to re-enter them. Uh, maybe with a safety plan, maybe with a success plan, maybe meeting with the counselor, preparing some of the harm that they did. Three. Total long term suspensions or exclusions. Um, I know that probably doesn't sound like a lot, did we skip the thirty-seven each slides? There's that next.
It's next.
Okay, um, the next slide will explain why that is such a low number. Okay, um, that is under state federal law now, that is a very extreme measure that schools are allowed to take. When you, when you kind of crunch some of these numbers, it boils down to is a suspension rate of six and a half percent. And so what that means is. While the students we have that are causing a lot of disruption to the building, and we're acknowledging that. You know, ninety-three and a half percent of our students have not committed sustainable offenses. Okay, more have committed infractions that warrant detentions at school and 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 other things. But the vast, vast majority of the students at O'Malley, this is when we say, when they come in and they say they're doing what they need to do every day. That this is, this is sort of the data showing that.
We'll also add, though, at the same time, that's higher than than the past.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, that for recent years is typically sort of the two, low to, you know, maybe higher two percent or anything. Okay, so this is significantly different. Um, and yet Mike's right, is that, you know, again, you know, uh, still, these are significant numbers, but they're not high, I mean, for a suspension. The primary removal of class is hot, that's a lot. A lot of work and a lot of fun, a lot of folks, okay? Um, so again, just wanted to share what interest we have with folks. Folks have asked for that. They should be seeing it. So one of the sort of layout there, a little context there is that that's a higher suspension rate than we typically see in O'Malley class number of years.
Certainly, I missed the details, how do you calculate the rate?
Rate would just be um, the number of students who have been suspended. Based off of the total number of students.
Okay, so student divided by student.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm just asking questions about that, so I know I have a ton of questions too at the end, I'm trying to be quiet, but I can't always do that. Um, five hundred and eighty removals from class to a behavioral support room. In that number, how many students does that equate to? Are these repeat offenders? Like, did you say we're dealing with a handful of people, which I believe is a lot more than a handful of people, but I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
Um, what the numbers.
So I will say some of these, so this five hundred and eighty, so some of these might be due to those expected misbehaviors, right? So they're not the real egregious things, okay? So um, this, this is a broader, a larger number of students than the twenty-seven you're seeing. Obviously, those twenty-seven students are included in that.
Right.
Um, and they would, they would probably um. Make a good chunk of of those students, but, you know, we have students with um. ADHD that's, uh, and, you know, families choose not to medicate, and that's their right, we can't force that, and that's, it's what that is. And so um, at the end of six hours of schooling, that might be very hard for that student to regulate themselves in the classroom, and. Now they're becoming disruptive, intentionally, it's not a matter of disrespect, right? Again, that's where that piece of diagnosis uh, plays into it. And so it's where some of our structures come into play. So so you, when you're seeing that, oh, six hundred, you know, that, that's also just, by the way, of students that were brought there to do some work with Mr. Semenara. Or maybe wait while an AP got some, there are other times where our AP, who are our assistant principals, myself, or. Actually, I I will say, our our adjustment counselors, our guidance counselors pitch in a lot. Um, they don't administer discipline, but sometimes they are the first line of defense, because. If, if my seventh grade assistant principal is in one of this disciplinary hearings and a student is being disruptive in class. He can't be in two places at once, right? And we need to remove the student from class. So so that's where, you know, they come in, they don't do the discipline, but they will come and assist, have the student come out, they do, like, depending on what it was. Maybe they swallow up with one of us once we're available. Or. The student got the break they needed, they're able to regulate themselves, and we give the class another shot. It's super contextual.
And then on the long term suspensions and exclusions, you have three, so that means more than ten days?
Yeah, so.
And have these students returned to the school, or how long, and how long can they come out?
Students.
They don't return to school?
They, they, these particular cases, they don't.
Those, so those are three, so they've been exposed?
No. I'll, I can explain that on the next slide.
Suspended for this year.
Yes. So. So like the, the five eighty?
Yeah.
That number plus reflects occurrences, not students.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Yes, right, yeah, I was trying to figure out how many students, in other words, do we have a period of those every week because of that situation?
Yeah, excuse me, we haven't had five hundred and eighty students come through there, but we've had. This is, yeah, this is Semenara logs it every time he's working with the student and then.
So just that, um, in this series, we're getting into some of the, also folks have asked about, you know, what are the? Things that, you know, sort of, we have to, we have to address or limit or, you know, sort of dictate how we do. So yes, staff members should respond to this behavior, consequences, okay, you know. And and there are processes, limitations, and regulations that our schools have to follow. But Mike will, I'll do the easy transition slide, Mike will, you know, I have found this.
You know, there, there have been some shifts, some master's, it's general law and desk regulations. Um, obviously, we have to follow the law, and we have to follow our governing agencies' regulations. That's not, uh, that's not within my judgment to go around that. The push has been to reduce suspensions and exclusion and limit how due allowance is charged, okay?
So let me, let me just time it there. So so those are policy decisions at the state level. Okay, both through state law, but also desk, our educating regulations. And very clearly, um, you know, uh, trying to reduce the the amount of time. Um, that folks, that students rather, uh, or that schools use suspension or exclusion for disciplinary purposes. I think there's been a real shift. Okay, the same time, to, to the juvenile justice system, it's also been a real shift of, of, you know, uh, limiting, um, how do you balance a charge? Or dropping charges, okay, when they're, okay? And that's also affecting some of the, some of the resource, the consequence that that may also, uh, some are, that that youth. You know, the sort of, uh, one of, one of the tools, sort of, community toolbox, basically. But those have been real shifts. Law, regulation, and also criminal justice.
We've mentioned a number of times whether or not a student has a disability, right? That comes up a lot, um, but again, state and federal law, very um, clear. Well, unless they intersect, then it becomes a little less clear. The federal law's really clear, the Massachusetts law's really clear. When you put them together, they don't overlap cleanly. Um, so we have to navigate that, but uh, the due qua, uh, process requirements, right? As I mentioned before. Um, if student has a disability, okay? By the time they reach their tenth day of suspension. We have to pause and slow down, and we have to hold what is known as a manifestation determination meeting. This is where, this is actually in a, a special education meeting, it is not a disciplinary. Where the team, that would be administrator, uh, a special coordinator, um, special teacher, adjustment counselor, if they work with that, a general education teacher. It's a, it's a logic school psychologist, we have to review the student's IEP, we have to review some of their testing. And we then have to present the specific conduct that is subject to discipline. Okay, so it's not a broad conversation about what the kid's behavior is, it's. They've been suspended for nine days. They just had an incident, and the administrator is proposing a three day out of school suspension, which bring them to twelve days total. Before we can suspend them for that tenth day. Or rather, the eleventh day, that meeting has to take place. And what we have to determine, and check me from Ron Dr. Drivers, but I think I've got this, uh, I've done a few of these, um, is. Whether or not the conduct subject to discipline. Was substantially and directly related to the student's disability. Okay, and that, so that's the threshold, okay? So if at the end of that meeting. The team determines that the behavior or the conduct was not directly and substantially related to the student's disability. Then we're able to move forward with our discipline process and suspend. If the team determines it was directly and substantially related to the disability. We may not suspend without written permission from the parent. Okay, and it becomes a special education issue at that point, it is not a disciplinary issue. Um, and that is not something we have an option of adhering to. Okay, that is a process by law we have to follow. Very important we do because it's the rights that are afforded to the students, that's first and foremost. Um, we want to respect students' rights. Secondly, there are accountability measures to that. If, if we skip the process, if we do things that we're not supposed to do. Um, parents can and probably should take their complaints to the uh, problem resolution system, which is a, uh. It's a part of the DESI. Or they can also take it to the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, okay? These are, again, timely, resource consuming, and costly situations for the district to find themselves wrapped up in. So it's very much in our interest to make sure we're doing it right upfront, um, and taking the time. Because there's accountability for the the district on that end of the state level. For all students, that brings us to the next question, this.
Can I ask a question on that from one? If you leave the map.
Oh, yeah.
So my question is to Gloucester, so directly to Dr. Drivers, on, on, until Titus. At what point, because I'm, I'm thinking standards, I want standards for a lot of these behaviors, and I'm gonna start with this one now. So when you make that manifestation determination. With someone who's on an IEP or a special needs. At what level does that manifestation determination outweigh the safety and disturbance in a classroom? Are you saying your hands are tied and you, the child has to remain in the classroom? Even just because of that manifestation determination? Or is there a point where so many kids are being disrupted, class is not happening, some students feel threatened by their safety? But yet there's the manifestation, so how do we approach that?
Right, so, uh. So it's clear, so the idea is before, right? That's our legislative, legislative.
Federal, federal law.
Law that guides this process, so in ten days, when we have to exclude it, for excluding kids for ten days, it's called a change of placement. So we can't do that, we have to hold a manifestation determination meeting to see if it's part of the disability.
Yep.
If it's part of the disability, then we have to program around it.
We have to program.
Program, so that could be additional services, replacement, we have, we'd be held with responsibility and program.
So placement can be outside of the classroom in a, in a separate program, or even in a separate school, if it goes through that point?
Potentially, yeah.
It also may be back to the school.
Right.
And 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 we bear.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out, where is that, with that standard?
So right, because we have an infraction, right? So let's say it's, 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 um, it's intense, unexpected.
Yeah.
And and it's part of the manifestation, let's say it's an emotional disability, child receiving services because of emotional disability. Then the the child has a right to go back to school.
Yes.
We have to follow that process, that's protected by federal law and supported by state, so we have to do that. Um, so sometimes, so that's when we have to put in actual supports in place, perhaps as an interim, until we could find another replacement. Or maybe another program. So that's, sometimes that can be difficult and challenging.
The program in the, in, in the school, right? A legal program part of the year is complicated, okay? Try to do that on the end of this year, but because um. Staffing issues that we'll get into, we couldn't, um, but we saw the need for it, but for different reasons, you know? But but I've also added staff, which is, you know, uh, sometimes, right, we'll do that as well. Um, but it also may be, um, uh, providing service outside of school or providing, uh, or identifying, um, an average replacement. That is also more complicated, more, and and more time consuming than before as well. So there are, at this point, we get to this point, uh, on any of these pieces, there are not easy solutions. They're all time consuming. And that's, um, we're very frustrated for folks, frustrating for the students, for their family, for their staff, for their stuff. Uh, because it's not, they, they, they're not, they're not time consuming.
Yeah, so all students have rights in that way, right? So so all students have a right to safety, the same time, students with a disability have a right to education too, so there's that, there's that competing interest sometimes, or. Or challenge that we have to deal with. And so our, our services and our programs, uh, have to reflect that process. And, you know, like they are robust, that's gonna be some of our work as we.
But simply excluding things is, is, is. It's, it's not a simple process.
I just can't, I'm just trying to, to find the answer here, so, um, because we want what's best for our schools.
Right.
I mean, the more I hear, I just keep hearing staffing problems, right? And I know that's cross, it's not Gloucester, right? It's everywhere. But I just really feel like we are not adequate on staff to address the issues that we're addressing. And this year has become extreme because we have more kids. I'm hearing a process that's put in place that sounds great, but I question whether it's working, because I'm hearing a great process, but I'm hearing from teachers and staff that it's not. So and I'm, so I'm trying to find what's really going on, and the more I'm hearing, it seems to me that it's lack of staff and.
So we'll get to more of what, what we'll be even better at.
And I'm not, there's no blame, like, I'm not blaming any administration, it just seems like.
We'll, we'll get to that, and and it's also, there are a bunch of pieces to that, that need to get better.
Well, we packed twenty-eight people last year, and we're begging for staff right now, so I'm trying to figure out. The solution to, for everyone to get the education that they deserve, but at the same time, not have distractions in class because someone's on an IEP. There's no place for them to go, or there's not enough staff to address the issue, so I'm trying to weigh that.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of both, yeah, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll do the thirty-seven each step real quick.
Yeah, yeah, this is another piece, this is, this is, this is ready.
This, this applies to any student that's subject to, um, out of school suspension, right? The, we operate on, uh, it's, it's national law, thirty-seven each, it's broken into a couple of smaller pieces here. Um, that, I'm gonna start actually at the bottom, uh, that's where most of our, um, that's, that's the law we're leveraging to exclude most students, right? So the, the best way to describe this is tampering violations, right? We have the right to establish rules in school. Um, school committee looks at that, right? We talk through those things, so we say these are the rules of the school, um, and we categorize them, and if you break them, we can short term suspension, okay? It was that easy, I mean, it was still through the whole process, you still had to do the discipline hearing and all those things, it was that simple. Two, three years ago, I think.
One and a half, I remember it was a good, one and a half, two and a half years ago.
Massachusetts passed a new law, it says it was a revision to thirty-seven each and three quarters. Um, which requires schools to consider and, uh. Probably, but we, it can be considered, we can make a justification why it's not appropriate, um, alternatives to suspension. Right, so, uh, those could be things like restorative practices, collaborative problem solving, community service, counseling, mediation, okay? Right, so those could be things like restorative practices, collaborative problem solving, community service, counseling, mediation, okay. So again, by state laws, this is a fight that two students have had. And they've been friends, right, context matters here, right, we're not talking about assault, we're talking about two really good friends. They're maybe taking the football game a little bit too seriously out on the playground, one bumps into one, and then they get into a scuffle, okay. The new 37 national, three quarters law would say. We're really obligated to sit them down and do a mediation and see if we can figure it out that way first before either of them get suspended and excluded from school. Okay, again, we can make a case on various things that that's just not appropriate. But we've been doing these things, right, maybe this, you know, this student has had a lot of these little, we've been doing problems, they already have a success plan, they already have counseling, and they still have the infraction. We move on, that's where most of our discipline happens. 37 H and a half.
So let's just add there, so it's putting in, actually going through measures in doing things prior to being suspended. And if we don't do that, then we can also have places file against us. So, but that's a real shift. And it's just that a lot of people don't know about, but 37 H three quarters requires that. Mike is right, there are ways you can sort of get around that, okay, but by and large, this is the, this is the law to win.
Then move up to 37 H and a half, and this is briefly summarized strictly related to students who have been issued a felony charge or been convicted of felony. The, this law allows us to. Indefinitely long term suspend a student while the felony is adjudicated, okay, so if it's issued out of. The magistrate's office, wherever they issue out of, the school is made aware, I have the right to say. While you're arraigned, while this is, if you go on trial, while X, Y, and Z, you cannot be in school, okay. As we've mentioned right at the top there, there's been some changes to juvenile, juvenile charge. Most 11, actually 11 year olds cannot be charged with a felony, so sixth graders, that's just off the table, okay. Some seventh graders and some eighth graders are able to be issued felony charges, but. Also, just in line with the thing we're talking about, very few of our students are committing felonies, which is actually a good thing. What is really disruptive behavior in school according to the law is not necessarily a felony, right, so I even know that it's really disruptive behaviors. I can't exclude long term because it's not a felony charge. And so the last one, 37 H, this is the strongest one, this is what allows for long term suspension and expulsion. Okay, so wanna be really clear, the law is pretty loud on this, right, that that idea of expulsion. It really needs to follow into, fall into one of these three infractions, which is. Bringing in or, you know, dealing drugs in school that does not include alcohol or tobacco. Okay, those are not included under 37 H, a student brings in a weapon. Or if they assault a staff member. And that's, that's it, 37 H is very clear on that, so so the limitations that we're dealing with here.
And when you mean weapon, you mean an actual weapon, a toy gun, for instance, right, that's not a.
It's a legal definition of a weapon.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We're near the point of like the length of, like a knife, for example.
Sure, yeah, I just wanna make sure that.
If it's very, very, you know, small, it's considered a weapon.
Yep.
Right, an actual weapon.
Yeah, yes, it's an actual weapon, yeah.
Because I've heard stories about, you know, kids getting into trouble for.
You know, the ORB, the ORB guns are a thing and they look, but they're not an actual weapon, so doesn't mean we wouldn't take action, but it doesn't qualify as a 37 H.
So we're not talking about an example that happened in Maine, like this.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's it.
Why are you clear, because, you know, because like, we're not talking about an example that happened.
Right, I'm just talking like generally in the in the country, you know, I've heard stories.
Just a quick clarification, this says drugs, weapons, and staff assault, what about other students assault, no?
It's strictly, it's it's very clear that it's an assault on a staff member.
So are you, are you implying that students that assault a staff member right now are being suspended?
A student's assault on staff member could be considered for this, depending on the larger, it's, it depends on the. Depends on the whole situation.
So that we have, we have. This is out of respect and out of confidentiality, for, I don't wanna speak directly to any.
I'm trying to ask about anyone in particular?
Any students who assault staff have that, we have the ability to specimen them, okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that happens in different ways and was considered an assault, okay, okay, you know. Second graders aren't to be assaulting people, they may be hitting them, and that's not good, okay. But so so at that point, you're considering it carefully, and you're also looking at, you know, it may. Be a student disability, and so there are different rules here to talk about, but so, but I, you know, any cases like that. Addressing seriously and taking very seriously.
In in the past eight, two, three years, how many student, I mean, staff assaults have we had that have risen to that level? Of a potential suspension?
I don't know.
Since since.
You've been here.
Is that in there? One.
One. Like I said, I'm trying to, to find out where this district is and their standards of discipline, that's why I'm asking this question. Not to anything specific.
And I'm saying, just to be clear, that's not for the district, that's just, it said in my, in my year and a half, almost two years, I've. Under that particular clause of 37 H, I've suspended one time.
Like a long term suspension? Or suspension, okay.
Long term, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we use the word exclusion rather than expulsion?
So an expulsion is a little bit different, that is, that's, and check me from Ron, but my understanding is that that would be. The lost or public schools saying, we will no longer educate your child from here henceforth.
It's a permanent rule.
Yes, and that also subjects a student to potentially not being publicly educated anywhere in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Exclusion, on the other hand, you're typically still responsible for educational services.
Well, I think I was looking in somewhere, you know, in the DESI or somewhere else, they're using the word expulsion in some areas, I think.
No, they, no, no, it's something we can and and can't do.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, we have a speaking about it, especially in middle school, it's very extreme, it's very, very rare. It's different in high school, because it's happening often, you know, obviously often, when it happens. It's related often to dangerousness or felony convictions.
Yes.
Okay, assault can be a felony conviction, for example, okay. So, but it's again, rare, that your expulsions at middle school are quite rare, very rare.
Yeah, I just wanna, for, you know, just wanna get.
Yeah, and that's the reason we're not really, you know, that what we're dealing with, you know, are suspensions, short term, long term.
And just to be clear, even outside of an expulsion, lost public schools are still charged with the educational well being.
Few more things to go on, and just in terms of, I wanna see if there are more questions on this, this, you know, where you're not only to understand, but also understand the impact on how the school operates. But it's also sort of some of the balancing goals here, but we're gonna get next into, you know, where we. It's broadly based, we, because it's a school, the school staff, you know, we're working on now, okay, and also areas we think we really need to improve on. And then, so before we get into that, wanna see if there are any other questions.
Can I ask a couple of questions, and it's not necessary for me, but it's it's kind of the action to. The request tonight, and just to note, there's still 84 people online, we had more. And there's probably 10 people in the audience for those at home that can't see. So I I think there was an expectation of some answers tonight about things that are available, so. Is anyone able to talk about the CCI group that meets, the person from the district attorney? And I think vice principals get together and talk about. Children, students that have severe discipline issues and circumstances that meet monthly. Can, so that the parents know what that is and that that happens, I'm not asking for me, I'm asking so that the community knows that. That's one small program that's in our schools that most parents don't know about.
Good segue, that's what we're gonna do next, is what we're doing, yeah, and we don't have CCI listed there, but we'll answer that, you know, talk about CCI specifically. Before any other question, before we get onto what's what's happening more recently and where we have to go.
Probably more of a comment, informational purposes, we need to expand on. Is that oftentimes if parents hear of something happening, they wanna know what the consequence for that student was.
Yeah.
Or they're not satisfied because they do not know, so speak to the privacy.
Sure, yes.
I mean, you've talked, you've talked about the process, so I'm sure that's very educational, that, you know, it lets people know that nothing is going on, but. But that desire to have a conclusion.
Yeah, so I'll give your voice rest. I'll be very clear, and this is something that I'm very clear about, is we do not share private information about students with other folks. And that's often staff as well, okay, and and especially disciplinary records or disciplinary actions, okay. Because we are protecting our students' privacy, okay, where I'm gonna do that by law, but also by sort of just respect to that individual. That can be very frustrating for folks, okay, when something, when harm has been done, folks want, want, need, expect closure, okay. But we will not share with, now, now we can and do, and perhaps we should do a better job of closing the loop with staff members on certain things. But we certainly will never share that with with. Should be sharing with other students, okay, we shouldn't be sharing it with staff members who aren't working with our child. We shouldn't be sharing it broadly, we shouldn't be sharing with the parents, and that includes parents whose child may have been harmed. That's particularly frustrating for those parents, understandably, okay, but just like. You know, often what we talk about is, if something, if your, if my child or your child did something difficult, wrong, mistake, even egregious. You would not want that being shared with all the or other folks about what happened to that. So again, that can be a real point of concentration and frustration, but it's something that we're really clear on. And not only us, but any school is strictly in the same.
Are you, are you saying that you can't share specifics, can you, can you say like, if my child had a, let's, I don't know, say a juice box thrown at him in the cafeteria, for instance. And the offending student was discovered. Can you tell the parent that discipline has been, you know, the consequences? Yeah, I mean, but not specifics.
So, so my my go to line that I approach my, he used to say, and it's still to be frustrating, but. We've, we've handled it in accordance with the student handbook. Right, and you read that how you want, but if it was an infraction, you know, we. We are following up on those infractions according to the policy that we've dictated for ourselves, right, so.
And we also try to explain to folks why we can't share them with them, and still understandably, that can be very frustrating.
Follow up on that, because I think that's a really important thing, because in this community, people share a lot. And so that's why there's videos and people are sharing videos and. I can understand the frustration and the sort of, it's all, it's 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 imbalanced, right? There's so much information out there, people talk about a lot of stuff with names, with all sorts of information. And then, but the school is not permitted to do that, right, so it's just, it's such a, it's so imbalanced. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying negatively, but I think it's, I think it's worth explaining, because I think it is confusing. When there's a story that sort of everybody knows, right, I'm saying that with quotes. But of course, we have, we have the obligation to protect someone's privacy. So I just wanna sort of.
Yeah, and I think that's the best way of putting it, you know, we do have an obligation to protect people's privacy, that staff, students, that's families. But again, take it very seriously, and people understand that can cause quite a bit of concentration.
And so when you get into mediation between the students, say like you sit them down and 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 then there is a disciplinary action. I mean, like, I'm just imagining that in that process of mediation that. The the student that was aggrieved would have knowledge of what the consequences are, no?
Necessarily, because it could, I mean, you know, that mediation can also all, will often happen separate from discipline. You can have both.
Okay.
So a student can have disciplinary consequence, and then they also do some mediation, you know, with other students. Those are really ones about sort of understanding, you know, the harm created, you know, how I hurt someone. Acknowledging it and trying to repair it, so mediation, another one is, you know, you broke a handbook rule, you have to have a consequence for that. And both can exist, they're not necessarily linked, okay, yeah.
Can I ask, if a student calls a teacher B I T C H, what else?
I mean, as long as the teacher alerts us. You know, that that student should be removed from class, some consequences should be issued, now they may.
What is the consequence, so remove them, like, walk me through it, so I'm the teacher, call me that name, I call somebody. Tell somebody to come to the class, have the student removed, how does that work? I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I mean, so that's one of those, and it's gonna sound like I've done it, but I'm not, that's one of those nuanced things and all those considerations that we just went through.
Yeah.
Need to be taken into account.
So. But tell me what happens, so the teacher contacts who and how?
They can call the main office, and they just say, can I have, and then we have radios and so.
As it's happening?
Yeah, so so.
Last one.
Yeah, so that's one, and they just pick it up and say, can I have administrator to, you know, to whatever, and then, and then we go.
And the student's taken out, and there's a conversation with the student?
Or or consequence, that's where we start unpacking, like, because this is where I guess it's, I'm I'm not trying to, but. I think people think it's that simple, and and that's no, it's, yeah, yeah, no, like, so. Why the kid, like, again, if it's a student that is, that has ASD and was perseverating on something else, and the teacher just happened to interrupt their perseveration, they may lash out. Okay, we still wanna remove the student from the classroom, but. Again, that's a consideration could be, if the administrator takes them out and we find out they got evicted over the weekend, and the kids in a state of crisis and never had been before. So, and that's what, that's, so this, I can't tell you, this is what we do every time, I can tell you.
Give me some examples of accountability of consequences, so student not on an IEP.
Okay.
Not house disbarred down, because we know.
So, so if a, if a student is, if we, looking at and go, this is blatant flagrant disregard for rules, norms, and authority. That student swearing at a teacher would be suspended.
Would be suspended?
Yes.
So tell me, I'm hearing about three strikes, you're out, what what is that philosophy?
So that's specific for our eighth graders and the Washington DC trip and interview activities.
Oh, just for the trip? Interview activities?
And interview activities, so, eighth graders historically tend to start to feel their oats as the days get longer, okay, and. It is helpful for us to say. We can't, right, we are now coming up with this, we have a lot of big things coming up, right, we've got, we've got the boat cruise, we've got, you know, the. The graduation ceremony, we've, a lot of you going on DC trip, but if you're not going on the DC trip, you're going on these other field trips that we've got planned, you've got all these nice activities towards the end of the year. Do not start to decompensate with the behaviors, right, we, we're not gonna get eighth grade version of senioritis, right, so. But again, going back to our earlier slides, we know kids are having all sorts of things going on, so we can't expect perfection, right? So the street, three strike thing is really to say for this timeframe, this shorter timeframe, we are holding this thing in, the thing you lose, it's not about. If you get three strikes, then we're gonna have that discipline hearing, this is specific to. You will lose your DC trip, or you will not be allowed to participate in field trips, or you will not be allowed to go on the boat cruise, right, so there's all these privileges. That they're really running the risk of losing, as well as traditional school discipline that we just went through.
Okay, one more example.
Yeah.
Wait, hold on, wait, I'm gonna back to the first one, that can be also dealt with just by the teacher.
Okay, very huge.
Yeah, right, it's, so so both things can happen, and and teachers are, are, and can, and do, you know, can very serious consequences. And often, that can be more meaningful if there's a relationship between that teacher and the student, okay. So both is gonna happen, yeah.
Student on an IEP for whatever reason, flipping chairs in the in the classroom, goes outside, kicks lockers, puts himself in a locker. We heard that's happening, what would a typical response be to that as far as what, I mean, I know you have to go through the levels, but. Is it the same thing, call?
So, so I'm gonna correct just one verb tense there, because as a working middle school, we hear this a lot, and the way stories we relate is things are happening. Sometimes a thing happens.
Anything happens.
And once, and it gets reported as it's happening, okay.
Yes, that's for, and and.
As I know.
That's just, that's just lost.
I don't want to minimize any of that, and I really hope people are listening, I get that from us, but I'm trying to minimize things, and also. Okay, a thing can happen once or twice, and there are a lot of reporters.
Yeah.
And the reporters, some reporters were there, and a lot of other reporters. And there are reporters, some reporters were there, and a lot of other reporters, okay, and all gets echoed.
Right, no, I understand.
So again, that's not trying to minimize challenges were happening, okay? It's trying to add a little sort of perspective or maybe reasonableness on if you hear something five times, it may have happened.
Once.
May have happened once, okay? So just I just I just trying to be add add some reason reasonableness, yeah, yeah.
But.
So to give you this example, yeah.
Yeah, so.
This is where I'm trying to jump in and it's a lead foot.
So again, and and to be clear, just because a student has an IP doesn't mean they can't be disciplined, right? And we and we do discipline soon because again, I do think that there's that there's an educational component, right? And that's very important for me whenever I'm having some conversations with students to understand that the goal of this, right? The reason we're doing this, this is not because um. You know, we don't want you in the school, we're trying, this is because this is to reinforce your understanding of just how out of bounds what happened was. Right, that this is the measure we have to take and it's to reinforce that this was a big deal. Um and so. Again, a lot of us now, again, if a kid is that escalated, all right? Um first thing we would do is try to de-escalate that student.
In the class or outside?
Uh that that all depends, to be perfectly honest, because if. That student, it depends on that profile, right? It depends on because what we have to do as a very last measure is physically manage a child. As the absolute last measure and the and the threshold for that is they pose an imminent threat to themselves or others.
That also is a change from prior years. Okay, Lily could be, it used to be at these public schools, you can grab a kid, you can pull a kid, you can push a kid, okay? Very, very significant, you know, laws and also now training that go into not having restraints. Or not subject physically, you know, moving, controlling a child, okay, as to. And so that's a real change from what other folks may have experienced in their in their in their upbringing, their their school.
Unless there's an immediate threat of harm.
As as provided, yeah.
It's gonna sell for others.
Yeah, yeah.
So um and they're very clear in our training that that property destruction is not considered an imminent threat of risk of harm to themselves or others. Um unless they're just trying to destroy it with like, so if a student is, say, punching or.
Or they're head banging and harming themselves.
Right, so that that judge, there's right, okay.
And.
Um. So we need to escalate that student because just going in um hard and firm and that is that student is not in a good headspace, right? So we are not trying to further escalate that student and make the situation worse. So unfortunately, sometimes this does happen in populated public areas.
So while they're in the classroom, the teacher still you think? Well, this is go to escalation.
There there are times and situations when there's when there's risk of of harm.
Yeah.
Okay, or or the kid is the child, student is so is this is regulated. And we'll take children or teach them students outside of out in that class.
Okay.
Okay, both can.
And 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 I I won't speak to every single thing, but I also wanna point out to some of the examples you gave of like students flipping desks, okay? Um that's gen and I'm not gonna so just for everybody, like I'm not gonna say a hundred percent. That is generally during an unstructured or transitional period where course play goes too far. Okay, but we don't have. Um again, generally, there's a few exceptions with some students with certain specific learning profiles, right? Okay, that we know and they are generally not doing generally not doing this in the mainstream classroom, there's exceptions, but. A lot of times that furniture banging around is maybe two eighth grade boys, again. You force around jogging position and they don't have the good coordination and they're in a tight space and now you got furniture crashing around.
Is there a time when the school resource officer comes to the room? They get involved in any behavioral?
Um.
Things at the schools?
Hmm if it's a crime and we need to involve local police.
But that's that's I that's more an investigation after the fact, you're asking, just walk walk into a classroom.
Well, like if there's an incident, it could be a high risk, it's the school resource officer involved, like it flipping a chair could be an assault to somebody, that's a crime. Put somebody in here, that's a crime, right? That's assault, so. I mean, you're looking at me like it's not, but.
No, but.
It is.
Let's let's talk about.
So I'm just curious when when or if the school resource officer is involved.
School resource officer not used for disciplinary purposes.
Okay.
Okay, by I think I think law. Okay, and and are in with them, okay? They are used to support students who is who is regulated or maybe are, you know, leaving the building.
Yeah.
Okay, they're used that way, definitely, they're certainly used to understand and support families with students who are, you know. The most most complicated case, I'll put it that way, or obviously they, you know, have um something outside of school as well. Um they're they're tremendous at learning what's happened in difficult situations or investigations, okay? They're they're helpful in so many ways, so they they know our kids, they know our families, uh but they don't, they're not all not meant to be involved in discipline, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to learn, right?
Yeah, we're we're.
We have two thousand in the school, things that happen and people question, well, what's a resource officer doing, right?
Where 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 schools are a front line is a lot of things happen outside of school and the first time. Maybe a trusted adult is made aware of it is at the school, okay? Um and then we that's not on the slide, but that's another limitation. That we have is how far our authority extends outside of school hours and outside of the school building. We we can help manage things, right? We can put things into place as it comes into school, but um certainly if something happened, some sort of harassment or or some incident took place outside of school. Um having a school resource officer in the building right there, um we now that's the sharing of information because that and that's where I get to say like. Yes, so obviously a fight takes place in in at recess, it could be considered a crime. It's best practice that that is handled at the school level. Because we have more resources, we have always more age appropriate, the way that we can manage it and have those educational challenges. But if fight happens out uh in the community. I I have very limited authority to manage that, right? So then we that's where we would involve the law enforcement. Yeah.
All right, we're gonna, yeah, sure, we're gonna get into something I think folks have been waiting for a long time, but but what efforts are underway now? Um and also things you identified, you know, there's also more you can do, so give me a moment here. I do wanna say um I didn't share this tonight, but you know, if you do look at um you know, data of if it looks at, we should we share with you. We stop talking if you want the good time and get the presentation back. Right? Um so as we just shared this data with you. Um and what we and we can share, you know, we gather the, you know, data over time. Um and you know, these numbers have been trending downward of late and there's an uptick this year. Okay, so we can share that, we should share that with families and also um the public, you know, families, like school committee. Um so that's also another piece here is that um as opposed to when there's a upward trend over time, right? Um but things have been going better, good at O'Malley and this is some ways uh we hope in a long way. Um so uh through all that, so here's the improvements are underway and there's also more that we can do, so. Um Mike and I will sort of share this one, but Mike, you can start talking about some of the things that happen in school, I'm chiming in.
Yeah, um so we have a newly formed behavior support team. Um we are working on a number of things, we're looking at um procedures, how do we make some of our reporting procedures uh more effective, more efficient? Um that allows us to act more effectively, more efficiently. Um. A a big piece of this has been the accountability piece, okay, and and things that we are doing. Um but uh we did have someone speak at the beginning and it was a piece that we haven't close enough on is. How are we promoting positive culture as well, not just the accountability slash punishment piece? How what are we doing for the kids, for that large group of kids that aren't there? So that that's a piece that the team is taking on as well um of of because. When you have that, then we're not normalizing the negative behaviors, right? We're saying this is the what we're promoting and now we're trying to address these. Um so there's a there's a lot of cultural work that they're doing that we're doing with that team. And there's a lot of procedural process and actual work that we're doing with that team.
We do need some more folks on the O'Malley behavior support team, so there are no O'Malley staff maybe listening. Um but it would be helpful to expand that team to 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 include more teachers too, and so get a broader even broader perspective. On that team to to do that very, very important work.
Yeah. Um I've been working with the degree levels uh teams and specialists um cuz we. Everybody's working really hard, right? And but outcomes matter, right? So we've been uh just what we're trying to do is the teachers really. They're the ones that are with the students every day, so I've I've kind of tasked them with is we need to talk about what you're doing well. Uh what we're doing well systemically, but also where do we need to improve? Where are our weak spots, okay? Um the the. Some of these behaviors are not pervasive across the building all day. It is um the return, the specialist transition might be a a pain point. And that's not because anything wrong with specialists, I'm not trying to point any fingers here, it's just that our commons can sometimes become a supervision desert. Okay, so how do we disperse our staff better, right? We're we're really trying to say, where how do we set this thing up so that when students are in these unstructured times, transitions, lunch, recess. Everywhere they turn, they're seeing an adult, right? Um and there they know that the supervision is is tight and so that that is a check for them for some of that impulsive behavior.
But the teacher's been able to identify those weak spots.
Um I've been so I've I've been, I've started to get some really good ideas around uh ways that they could um improve some things. Right now, it's a matter of the consensus, the buy-in, and then get it on base. So it's gonna be kind of a little bit of a process over the next probably week to um that the next faculty meeting, people, we can come together and come to some collective agreements. Okay, where we say, these are the things we're committing to, um and I did talk about this with the staff at the beginning of the year as well, right? Um they're a little bit disruptive here, um after the fall too, right? We lost a little bit of momentum, um but you know, it it was laid out where. When when we talk about discipline, it's not just for the students, right? Establishing routines and rituals requires discipline of us. That we will always be at the door to greet the student, we will always be, this is our attendance routine. The students don't even know we're doing it, but I'm doing it the same way every day so that I know I've taken attendance, I know who's in my class, who should be, who shouldn't. Um you know, I am going to hold the students accountable for this is how we get materials every single day, right? So that's like that piece, that's where we have to do, right? Um I have multiple alarms set on my phone every day so that. I'm never late on the morning announcements, I'm never late on the afternoon announcements, I'm always in the comment at the morning, like people and. You know, I look like a crazy person when I go to a professional development, I forget to shut it off, right? And all of a sudden, my alarm's going off because I'm supposed to be doing afternoon announcements, right? So there there's there's. A piece of you, it's it is a tiring job, right? But the the task right now is not to let off the gas, it's it's where we where we stepping on it a little bit harder to. Because that will help calm the building down as well, right? So the the this is this is work that we need to do and people know their areas of the building, right? What works for sixth grade might not work for seventh grade. They're in very different parts of the building, right? So that's where I'm starting to be level teams, let's bring it, and then we need to come to some collective agreements. But these are the things we're gonna hold each other accountable to, um to set the expectations for the students and for each other, so the behavior can be bad.
I just ask, does that include teachers modeling? Um how they speaking to students in ways that, you know, they wanna model? I know that we've got a lot of teachers who've been, I mean, we've both spoken about how the it the uh the rules have changed. The attitudes have changed, right? The laws have changed around how we hold kids or whatever. And my understanding is the way we teachers speak to their students has also changed or how we wanna model that. Uh I know that's touchy, but I know that, you know, it's personality, but it's also, you know, obviously if you wanna create the culture. Where people speak to each other with respect, we want teachers to be always speak to their students that way as well.
I think I always you want all the adults, whether that's a a family, a YMCA, you know. At a youth youth group, the school remodeling the the best behavior. Absolutely, that that's very, very important, and it's how we speak to each other, how we speak to our colleagues, how we work with each other, you know.
How we deal with adversity.
Yeah, yeah, so so.
As adults.
Always look back in school, always look back in school.
And that actually is a conversation we've been having on baby support team around what are our tier one? Um behavior supports, okay? And adult modeling is one, right? We I I've said this before to folks and I'd say to anybody who wants to hear that we cannot expect more of our students than we expect of ourselves. Okay, so their anger, if they're frustrated with something, is not less genuine than any frustration or anger that an adult might be feeling. That's as real for them as it is for us, so if we can't control, if we can't, you know, maintain ourselves when we're frustrated. We can't expect more of them, right? So that is it's a huge piece, um and it's just work, keep we need to keep working on it.
I wanna push back on that a little bit, so I I understand the model and behavior. But I can't help but wonder if a lot of any type of behavior that may not be exactly proper is due to frustration because there's not enough. Support to deal with what they're dealing with. And I say that, like, if I'm a teacher, God knows I could never be a teacher, I could never shut my mouth long enough to be like that. With those kind of behaviors happening now without being vocal. So you have a teacher who has students, whether they're on IEPs or not, you know, displaying disruptive behavior every day. Day after day after day, and they may take the position that there's not enough staff, there's not enough support to address what's going on in the classroom. More and more is expected of them every day, so I just I'm not, I'm just saying, I don't think it's.
So I wanna.
I just just feel like that needs to be said too, I understand model and behavior, absolutely. But I also understand frustration and I think we're at a point that we are very highly frustrated in all schools, not just here. And that's starting to break and that's part of the problem, like we have systems in place, we have processes in place, but is it enough? I say no, but.
But I'm talking about classrooms where there's not necessarily behavioral issues going on. There's not necessarily the kinds of things that, you know, we're talking about is unusual or whatever. I'm talking about how we act in situations that are not those extreme situations and that's part of this um. The culture.
Yeah, no, I just don't wanna lose track that there's a lot of frustration.
Sure.
And 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 same with administration, right? We're all frustrated, what is going wrong? We could talk about this topic forever, getting talking about social media and the impact that's bringing to the school, right? So I just don't wanna lose momentum on the fact that we're trying to address issues and not try to point fingers, so.
Um I I think one of the pieces here, and this is the next one, is this also consistency, that's, you know. So this one, probably gonna Mike and team are working on, you know, with some support from me, Pasquale is commensurate consistency. You know, and appreciate their support, so you know, so are our system principals having similar responses across all grade levels? And we need to work on that, honestly, and and Mike's worked on it with the team, already thinking about work on it, have been, you know, prior to the last couple of weeks. Um but that needs to be this really consistent across within each grade or cross grades, okay? Um so, you know, similar uh process and similar, you know, consequences for similar actions, that sort of thing, right? Um you know, another change we're gonna be making, and this is gonna be new for next year, is that some principles will stay with the grade. Um instead of moving up a grade, so they they've been moving with the kids. So the notion there was that the guidance counselor, which is a principal, move every year with the kids, okay? There's a really good rationale behind that. What we're gonna shift to next year to try is having some principal stay at the grade, so every year, secret, our principal, okay? Um seven to eights as well.
It's one particular that we haven't yet decided who's where.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's just where they are now, I just wanna be clear about that, that that's not that's not following through if if they're in a different place next year, we'd be have that entirely complete.
These are new decisions and not you're not, you know, fully, okay?
Your chairs and the music stops.
Yeah, yeah, right. But what's really important about that and 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 the reason we made that shift is because it's because it's this idea of consistency and coherence. And same, you have on the same page, that teachers and the system like together, what's our approach in this grade? And how can we build that over time, okay? Um because that's a principal in relation with with the teachers for all this relationship building, all this culture building. And also consequences is really important, how they work together. So really, they can build that team together and over time get on the same page and and really sort of develop that approach. Um so that's something we're we're gonna ship for next year.
Is it system principal and guidance counselor?
No, the guidance counselor will still move with the with the grade, cuz it is important for that, that's a family connection, student connection, that sort of stuff, so. Yes, that's the that's the balance we'll have, which thank you for that question. Um your teams and and they'll and they'll help teams build a consistent approach across the grade. Other thing is, this is where Pasquale, actually, like she often does, is stepping in and helping in and she'll she'll be at, she is already at and will be at. O'Malley more in the coming weeks as well, okay? And and she'll help on lots of different levels, um as she always does, so that's that's a that's a big help. And other places we're working on now is on family engagement, so launching a new parent organizing group. Um some of the folks here will be a part of that first organizing group. Um they will then work on how do we pull on other parents and the and the larger group of parents, okay? To then help parent, family, a larger parent, you know, and family effort about, you know, parents supporting parents, parents supporting parents on what does it mean to be a middle school teacher? Middle school uh parent, what does it mean to have good behavior in in um in O'Malley? What's expected expectation of O'Malley? What what how do parents and families involve themselves in helping O'Malley build a strong, positive culture? Okay, that's work that the parent organizing group has, you know, will be developing, so I'm not. Okay, that's work that the parent organizing group has, you know, will be developing, so I'm not, I don't wanna say I don't know what it is because they're gonna work on that, but really, over the last few weeks, some great outreach, um, including from folks who are here tonight, um, on, hey, we wanna help out. And we really, I deeply appreciate that, um, folks stepping in, stepping up, wanting to play a role, helping families out, helping school out. That's a big deal. Um, City by Family Forum, on, which I mentioned earlier, on supporting young adolescents, the acknowledgement that we need to support our young adolescents, um, eleven to fourteen year olds across the city, across the waves. Um, and how do we do that together? Um, and then also I have a PTO leaders group, um, that meets every month, every month. And this year, this, this month, um, happens to be, that we're discussing a social media, um, sort of cellphone guidance for, for families. How can we be clear about using donuts around cellphones and social media? Um, and that's something we'll be discussing in our meeting, because certainly we haven't talked about it much tonight, but that is a big influencer um, on, on everything we're talking about. There are student developments, student learnings, student, student behavior, so. Uh, but parents really wanna, again, help other parents with some clear guidance on tips and tricks on what to do about, about cellphones, social media.
Except, um, related to family engagement, I just wanna make sure, so, I remember this from elementary issues. Who are the students that are, um, having the most issues? Um, their families need to be involved in any solution, I mean, in any solution. I know that that can't be required. I guess I'm trying to say, like, how do we engage the families? Um, I don't know if there's an answer, but how do we engage the families of the kids who are most in need?
Yeah, I, I can, I can answer that, and please try to specific step, is the families we probably know the best are the families and the students who are the most challenges, okay? And we know that that's the case, I can say confidently, because it could be our adjustment counselor, it could be our guidance counselor, it could be system principals, it could be your, your teachers, it could be district level staff in support. We really work with and do our best and possibly can, support those families, work with those families. Doesn't always work well, okay, some families it works tremendously well, others it doesn't, okay? Um, these may be families who have really, really significant needs, okay? But I, I, I do believe that those are some of the families we know best, and work most closely with. Um, again, it's not, um, it's complicated, like all this is, but, um, do you wanna add to that, or?
Yeah, well, I mean, just the previous slide that we went over about all those outside agencies, right? Um, it's usually us connecting them with those, right? So, um, you know, whether it's, uh, you know, connected with DCF so that, um, I take a lot of, I don't wanna say a lot of people, I think some people view that as punitive, right? That, that is a community organization, a social agency, we have to get services for families that might need help, right? So, uh, that, that is, that can get you, uh, in therapy a lot faster, you know, might get the student, um, outside counseling a lot faster. So, um, you know, we, we are working really closely, um, with these families and, you know, so when we say, you know, it's complex and it's hard and it's nuanced, um, and I know people maybe just wanna see those discipline numbers grow up. Um, but those are the same students that are gonna be heavily involved in community resources, um, and it's what is really important, again, I will say this, is to maintain those relationships, okay? Those families are taking a big leap of faith in, in the schools to provide them support that what we're doing to them, and the family is not punitive. What that, the actions we may take against the student for a particular, uh, incident is punitive, okay? But their relationship with the school should not be punitive, because then they disengage. Then the trust is broken, and now we have a student that was at risk, and they're even further at risk. And now what we've lost is the most important adult in their life, um, they're buying to what we're trying to do to help them. So sometimes what you're seeing is, unfortunately, what might to some folks be very disruptive, that's actually, that might be a vast improvement from where they would be if we were not operating in the way that we do, with the connection to services, with the connection to support, with the, you know, with the buy-in and taking our time, um, sorting things down, maybe engaging the special education process, right? So, um, that, that's a, that's a, that's a very fine balancing act we have to walk where it doesn't mean we're permissive of behavior. Um, but it means those consequences have to have buy-in, because if we lose the parents, if we lose the family, um, we've lost our best partner in, in hopes of, of including that student's long-term outcomes.
And I, and I will say, sometimes it goes very well with families that are really challenged. Sometimes it doesn't go well, right, just be real. Um, and many cases where we have a lot more collaboration, support, working with the families. For one reason or another, it's not happening, it doesn't come, but, um, so that, that happens as well. Um, but I, it's not from our lack of trying, for sure.
And that's where the CCI group helps immensely, right?
And, I mean, you're talking about with the DA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it can.
You have a DA's aren't from the DA's office, potentially involved with many of our troubled kids, and meets with them and talks with parents, provide services. I mean, I hear about it, because the district attorney's office is in our building.
Yeah, so.
And I know you have, and you hear about it.
Once, every couple of months?
Yeah, we have, no, it's, I think we have four, three, I think, quarterly, yeah.
Um, meet monthly.
Not Gloucester.
I just sent you guys a schedule that I know is active, um, but that's okay. Um, I think different people meet at different, different months.
Yeah, I think they travel around the area, Gloucester participates about four times a year.
Maybe Gloucester's specific meeting report to you.
I think so.
And these are folks who are, students who are core involved, okay? And it is a way of, um, understanding specific cases and getting additional agency help because of it.
And I, I just think that, like, you know, what you said a minute ago, like, might have been one of the main takeaways for me tonight. It's a dual track thing, you know, you can't disengage the family just because this. My only, my only caveat to that is that there's kids out there that, you know, might have almost no family like this. Talking about no connection, and really difficult to wrap services around a kid like that.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I mean, that's the ultimate thing, right? We, we, we can do referrals, we can connect, we can do all these things, um. Ultimately, it'll always be the adult at home's responsibility to then follow through on those things, right? And sometimes we do, and we see great results, and sometimes they don't, and so that means we try again. And that's the thing I wanted to say, and, and to some of, you know, to speak to some of, I think, you know, people have been using the term burnt out, you know, exhausted, it's, that, that, that's a hard piece. Because the, the staff, my, my sports staff, myself, my APs, we're not gonna quit. So when other areas of support falter, we go back to the starting board, or we go back to the starting line and we run off again. Eventually, you run the same race enough times, and it's tiring, right? So, um, there's not a simple solution to that, because we do everything we can up to a point. And then sometimes that, that we have to hand it off, and sometimes it's a fumble. And that's, that's reality, and I say it without judgment, um, for those families, because they have their own challenges and they have their own situations. Um, but that is reality, right? And so then we go back to the drawing board, is there another way we could do it, that we have been more supportive? Um, we have to, because, again, we're trying to change the behavior, we're trying to improve the outcomes, we're not trying to, you know, break the kids' wills, but we're trying to get them to engage and buy into their education.
That's also a time where we might start to think about getting in-home support or other community agencies, where we really want to get to a wraparound approach, because sometimes if the family's struggling as well, um, you know, we need to get them connected to people that are gonna help them as well, these families are gonna help the students, right? So, um, it, it's an ongoing process. And sometimes you call a family and have a conversation, and it goes horribly bad, and then you call another incident, and they remember that, you know, you're still caring about your, their child, right? And you start to build that relationship, and maybe the next time it doesn't go as bad. And you start to build the trust, and it's just, we have to do it on repeat, and it is tiring for everyone. And, um, but that's why we're here, so.
I, I am curious, just, and I know it's getting late, we could talk about a long time, but what about those families, or is the, is the narrative overblown that there's parents out there that don't wanna take response, you know, like, if you were to call a family, there's a problem at the school, is there a group of parents, or are there parents out there that simply say, well, it must have been something that you've done, it's happened at the school, and don't wanna take responsibility for the.
That conversation happens.
It does.
Wait, what, what do you mean by the conversation happens? Would he just characterize it? Okay, parents have the response, okay, I'll be, I'll be more blunt. Um, it happens on many levels. It could happen on, you know, my kid, uh, was rude to a teacher, and, and, and we'll have that responsibility here. No, it couldn't, it wasn't my kid, okay? Or it could be the most significant cases. So, yes, that definitely happens, and I would say it probably happens more now than it used to.
It also happens that, well, if the other kid does it, why am I getting?
So again, trying to be real here, not trying to point fingers, but that's, that is part of reality and part of the struggle, is that, you know, and in, in folks in, you know, the school committee, teachers, parents will share with me, with us, like, oh, when I was in school, you know, in fact, you've shared one of these stories, you know, if, if, if my, you know, principal or teacher called my, you know, family, my mom, my dad, or my grandparent would have had any, would have allowed any of that, so, that's shifted a lot, obviously. And so, uh, for the vast majority of parents, yes, we get that support. And for a number of them, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, negotiating, you know, mitigating those small elements, um, you know, um, that, no, that couldn't possibly be, so. Um, and that is just part of the, part of the work that our teachers, our staff, our leadership have to do.
That's a difficult obstacle to overcome.
I feel like we need a respect campaign, like, walk in the school, you walk into Essex Tech, and I say that because I was on our school committee for nine years, so I've been in there, right? There's posters everywhere, there's messaging everywhere, right? But you can't walk ten or fifteen feet without being an artistic example of the word respect, or treat, be kind, or all those little slogans. I just feel like we really need to saturate as quick as possible and, and long-term, and just say, that is what we expect every day, respect is free, right? Just, just do it, hold accountable to somebody else out in class, point to a sign, respect, we're not respecting, right? Right? It would be great if we came and had been for vacation and the word was everywhere. Because I feel like we really, really lost that, and we shouldn't be. And it's, it just seems just such a simple way of addressing the issue. Will it show any progress? I don't know, but if everyone knows, if parents know, school committee knows, administration knows, we expect respect. I think if a lot of effort was put into that, like we do other things, other messaging, could go a long way. Just for us, oh, let's, let's do this, we recognize we have a problem with it, society as a whole does, we need to work on it.
You put that sign up there, for O'Malley drop-off.
Have the art students write it all over the wall, whatever they wanna do, be expected to stop.
I'm, I'm not, I mean, I don't know, I can hear what you're saying, Melissa, but I think, I think the students with the, you know, the most challenging disciplinary problems aren't gonna respect the, the signs.
But even the little things matter, I, I, the little incidents matter.
I think, I think that a lot of this has to come from peer, positive peer influence too.
Absolutely.
Um, and that, I think, would go a lot, you know, if there's like a group of kids that are just like, we're not gonna foot up with this kind of thing, you know, and, and they shame the other students, that could go a long way. I mean, I know we have groups, um, in O'Malley, uh, like student councils. Um, I think peer influence, positive peer influence does a lot more than just signs that kids are gonna get just glazed over seeing day after day.
Let me just, uh, we have, I just wanna wrap up a couple of things with this, I think probably one of the most important things that we haven't gotten to yet um, is what else we need to work on. Um, so, just in terms of, this is something I've talked about, so, we're a positive culture. And how do we sort of cement this in the building? Um, and so, again, this is strengthening these areas, okay? This is not, I, I, again, very conscious of not pointing fingers, and very conscious of not acknowledging, work's already been done, okay? So all these situations, it's about strengthening these areas, okay? It's not about, you don't have them, okay? So positive culture, so as folks were saying, engaging students more, building a positive class, house, discipline culture, okay? That's done a lot, um, probably needs to be done more, uh, and, and so part of the work Mike's doing and the houses are doing is, well, how can we do that more, how can we do it more and better, okay? Um, all staff building relationship, maintaining discipline, discipline, so that's about consistency, you know? Um, and some folks do that really well, really easily, and also it's not easy, you know, it's not, the relationships with, with, um, with any students or students who don't always, you know, um, I'm just putting it this way, it's more complicated than relationships with the middle school students than it is with a second grader, okay? That's not, that's not a bold statement, um, you know, but, but, you know, um, we, we probably all, all need to continue to work on that, okay? And then student staff, parents, all helping to support a positive school and culture. Yeah, that's just more, we can do more of this, is what we're getting, okay? Um, clear expectations, so again, this is sort of really nailing down that every house, every grade, every higher, you know, uh, and the school have clearly defined expectations, okay? That folks are consistent with and repeating and really, you know, are building in, okay? Again, this happens in places and we need to be more consistent about it, and more clear about it, um, and more, uh, repeated about it. That's gotta be shared, it's gotta be consistently enforced, okay? So it's about positive, it's about clear, um, it's about consistent, so consistently, um, consistent, consistently defined behavior expectations, considering important ones, um, and also consistent response in terms of what we're doing, we're addressing them, okay? We're doing that, the sense that O'Malley, I think, you know, is, is that it's, um, we can be more consistent across the board, okay? Both in, in what we're trying to do, but also have a follow-up and, and actually do it. And in a place that has, you know, let's see, ten houses, right? Ten houses, sorry, ten houses, six hundred, you know, six hundred students. Sorry, nine, two, one, three for grade, nine, um, and, uh, and, 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 you know, close to a hundred staff. It takes a lot of work and effort to be consistent like this, okay? But the students really benefit from that, okay? And then another piece is just additional resources. So we are building us, we are strengthening this house, so there's a separate emotional behavioral, special education program next year, okay? Be more staff we've had in the past, and, and a clearer, uh, purpose, and really making it substantially separate, okay? We're doing it quite differently in, in, in the recent past. Um, need more tools. I would say, and I think you're talking to folks, a greater variety of consequences. We need some help on thinking through what those consequences are. Um, I love the idea of community service as a consequence, a lot of folks don't, and, um, and a lot of folks push hard against us on that, okay? But there's a little power in that and other things. But that's something that parents and, and, and others can help us with, you know, what else can we do, okay? Um, sorry, I just repeated a second there. Um, so we are also adding staff next year, okay? Um, especially education primarily, but also behavior support, um, and that's an important piece, you know, if we can't do that during a budget year, um, and we all have to have, have had some staffing challenges this year with some departures or leaves mid-year. Um, we hope to correct those for next year as well, not on Friday. Those are in some of our sort of real high leverage positions, we've lost staff this year, or folks have gone on leave, that's a really challenging as well. So, um, pause there for any questions on those things?
So I just wanna sort of reflect some of what we heard from the speakers at the beginning.
Yeah.
Um, so, I know there was an intention to put a substantially separate emotional behavioral classroom this year, it, it didn't work. And we're trying to get it for next year. But what are we doing now? Like, we, I know we're building culture, and I get that, but I also know um, there seems to be a cohort that is just really disruptive. Um, and, you know, I'm an O'Malley parent, O'Malley parents and O'Malley, the O'Malley community is worried about it. Whether or not it's because they've seen videos or whatever, people are very worried about it, and the community's worried about it. The YMCA is worried about it, Gloucester promising is worried about it. So, like, next week, or, like, what, what can we share that we're, that's gonna change? I mean, I know you don't change behaviors immediately, you can't, these are complex, these are complex people, and complex issues, and there are all these legal restrictions to what you can do. But what can we say we're doing that's gonna impact this year?
I was gonna ask the same exact, what is gonna happen after tonight?
I think we've got some of that. Well, so it's hard to, so it's important to, I mean, not to go into specifics with that, but I can tell you that, that, um, there's a comprehensive plan for youngsters with a high level of need to, to work towards a more therapeutic setting.
Now?
Yeah, yeah, already in process.
Yep, and, and that process, right, is, again, one of the things that slows it down, but we are, it is in the process.
And it has been, yes, it wasn't just, it just unfortunate.
This, 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 months of work.
Right, right, and.
Right, and then, of course, it explodes with these videos, it explodes not to you.
You just did it though, you said videos.
Well, there, there are.
Well, we had videos in September, and we have videos now, so let's know, don't please, serious issue.
Again, with the risk of times, okay? Mostly videos are not happening here in O'Malley. Outside of the school.
That's true.
Now, 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 some of these students that are, the video we're talking about, are students who are in or have been in our schools, okay?
Right.
But, but the level of, well, what, it has been shared that I've seen, okay? That's not, those things don't happen in O'Malley, okay? I'm not saying, I'm not trying to, you know, be real about this, okay? So I, I want to be clear about.
And I, I totally appreciate that, but it's O'Malley students.
Yes.
Who are impacted.
So as Mike was saying, already in process, work with students and families, much more therapeutic approach, okay? That, and, 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 I just can't say more.
I, I get it, I get it. It just, I know that the community wants to know.
In terms of, now, other folks have certainly asked about.
That's a real action step.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's an important action step that we should highlight.
But there is, there's a process for that, it's not just instantaneous.
Right, of course.
And for a multitude of levels, and everyone's nuanced for those points of view, but yes.
And, and another area, and, and, and Mike, and, and, and that's really in the eighth grade team, we'll start, we'll be, you know, communicating out more about the eighth grade trips to get a little closer, okay? And folks have raised directly with me and with the school committee about the eighth grade trip, okay? And just to be clear, you know, there are already students who aren't going on that trip, okay? Either their own choice, their family's choice, or administration's choice, okay? And they're, you know, and, um, students may lose the trip, okay? But there will be chaperones there, Principal Titus going himself with others, okay? The bill can be more detailed about that, but I want us, you know, I do hear folks concerned with the eighth grade trip, okay? Um, and, um, the folks have got, you know, earned their way on that trip, and, 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 um, some students won't be able to go.
And is that a consequence that you think is meaningful to students who are in this highest behavioral issue? I'm just curious, we're talking about consequences.
So, so, I, I, this is about, I think you're actually, you're actually talking about to turn the currents. In the sense that it was the threat of not going on the trip, okay, going to deter people from actions, okay? If you're dealing with emotional behavior disability, or other, or you have, or you're, you know, you have, you've got serious, serious challenges in your life, okay? It is, it is unlikely that, um, a young student, whose brain is, you know, all about, you know, lack of impulse control and all sorts of other things, okay? It's going to have that as a deterrent. Most kids will have that as a deterrent, okay? Some will not, okay? But we're certainly, I, you know, I.
And to your point, to those students, they're already not coming, okay? So I do just want to be clear about that, without, you know, those, those students are already not coming. So that's, it's not going to act as a deterrent, because that's already been determined either on our end, on their end, or the family's end. This is not an appropriate experience.
Right. Is there a plan in place that if the trip starts, you're on the bus all the way down there and something goes wrong? Is there a plan to de-escalate or prevent further?
Right, so again, those students where we have those concerns.
Are going.
Are, are not going through various numbers, are already not going.
But you're, and you, and the plan is the same for the expected misbehavior that middle school students.
Right.
And there's something agreed, just to happen in the agreement, and at the, the things that parents have assigned says, I will come down and retrieve my child, that is something that the parents have signed.
And that meeting with the parents, right?
And that can be for, 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 or that can be for something that's, you know, protocol.
The other thing that's happening now is, I mean, I heard tonight about kind of like the levels of behaviors and the real extreme behaviors. We're talking about the therapeutic approaches and all of that. But the lower level, um, kind of expected misbehaviors, um, that have been not addressed as consistently because of the higher level instances, we are taking a real measured approach to, to hone in on those behaviors.
Now?
Now.
Now.
Um, I met with, uh, Principal Titus and his administrative team just this afternoon, and we talked about house meetings. We talked about having clear cons, um, expectations and consequences. I, we talked about that I'm going to be there more to help bounce ideas off of, or think, um, you know, think problems through. Last week I was making phone calls to parents myself, like, we're, we are right now changing, trying to refocus some of the behavior of the, uh, assistant principals on those not extreme, we can't ignore the extreme behaviors, obviously. But because they've been so many and varied, they've been distracted by them. So we're refocusing on those kind of lower level to settle, that will help settle the entire building down. And, and that, so we are working on that just today, and we were working on it last week, and we are working on that now.
Need about to me.
Well, we currently have one and a half, basically what I said was, I, I need somebody essentially with the skill set to get some reprieve, to increase the bandwidth, because there's a lot of proactive things that my grade level APs could be doing. There's a lot of, um, things that, you know, I'm working with Ben on right now, is, you know, you can, the kids are there for six and a half hours, I can stay till eight o'clock every night, but there's certain things you can do when the kids and the teachers are in the building, right? So that's your, that's your time to have high leverage, um, and for them to be able to work with their teams and do those things, that's where, you know.
And there's systematic things that, things that are changing, that are very little, but they're going to make a big difference, you know? Prior, a week ago, if an assistant principal was asking for footage for a student doing something inappropriate on a Chromebook, right? There were layers of things that kind of slowed that process down. We've changed the system that the assistant principals have the authority to request that. As long as Principal Titus CC'd, we don't have to then wait and check with Mike. Like, like, we, we're going to move on these, we're going to try to speed up the processes we can. Because the larger processes, as you heard tonight, is a lot of time, and we can't speed those up necessarily. But there are some other things we can streamline and systematize and make it a little more effective. So we are working on what we can, um, as fast as we can, while other areas are working on a more therapeutic approach for the larger issues.
And it would be helpful, from my perspective, uh, being at perspective, we are budget building right now, right? We're getting ready to finalize our budget. It would be helpful for you to take any lessons learned or best practices that need to be put in place, and incorporate that into your budget request if we need, this, this has to be a priority going forward for next year.
Yes.
You know, I, I, I believe that there'll be change through some minimal changes that we can do. But if there, if you learn in your experience over the next couple of weeks, there's additional measures that can be taken somehow that have a budget impact, I'd like to have that conversation.
Part of redefining the programs that we've already had in the budget, um, there. Also, just to point out, we have current open positions that are not filled because of somebody, some people leaving mid-year or leaves. So, so to fill those positions, we're looking to and happy to, but if we find the right person, but that's not going to be a budget constraint, because it's already in the budget for this year.
And I will just, without saying, they are critical positions.
Yeah, yeah, they really are.
Yes.
That have not really.
Is there a way to reach out to, like, Lizzie University that holds out thousands of teachers there yet?
We are continuing to reach out to many, many places. Um, we're going to a job there, and, and over April break, I'll be there.
I'm trying to get internships, right? Internships are a way to.
Yes, and these are high-skill positions. I, I would have, it, you know, that, that's, I'll leave it there, they're, they're high-skill set positions, that, like, uh, an intern or, or someone doing their practical may not be appropriate for.
And it falls on program design too. So to strengthen that, that's, that's got to be forthcoming with this, so that it's a meaningful delivery instruction, therapeutic kind of way, so that it does rise to a level where we have this behavior that's pervasive.
Um, that, one last piece here. Uh, so yeah, yes, we strengthen these areas, and O'Malley needs support too. So we're talking about a community-wide approach, as we've talked about a number of times, that parent partnership, we talked about that, and really appreciate folks stepping up to organize that. But that's everything from, you can talk about it since I, you know, supporting teachers on children's behavior, um, accepting, accepting appropriate, appropriate consequences, and then all actually other parents that guide it, so. Um, really appreciate, we, we work with parents on that. And then phone and social media use, something again, we'll talk about with parents, but, you know, you know, really partner with us to develop family guidelines for phones and social media, folks closely monitoring children's social media use. And also just a reminder that, you know, pretty much all the apps that, um, that folks, that, that are able to be used on social media aren't actually to be used by law, um, with kids who are thirteen and under, okay? Yeah, yeah, so the wires along Chuggal O'Malley, okay?
And social media include video games?
I don't know, so, so, the, so the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, COPA, and, uh, is the, sort of, is the law that'll land on this, I don't know well enough, know what, which, which types of, um, apps it, you know, or, you know, uh, it, it restricts, but, you know, if, they have, you have parental permission to do that by, by COPA, um, for anything that is gathering students' personal data, and all will do that.
And that, that's, that's a legal piece of it, uh, I would, I would broadly base it and just say, any app that allows students to interact with unknown parties.
Video games.
And, uh, uh, or anonymous parties, and/or uses an algorithm to drive engagement, should not be in the hands of a child, um, because the, the algorithm drives towards extremes. That's what it's designed to do, and so what I would say is just, uh, this is for any parents that are still on the call, the normalization of extreme behavior is not happening at O'Malley, it's happening in your child's home.
Yeah.
And then transferring to the real world, because the engagement says, I see fights, I see kids popping wheelies, the kids get prizes from social media for filming themselves doing dangerous tricks in traffic, okay? Not things schools can monitor.
It's desensitizing.
And, and so the normalcy of these behaviors, but more and more research is showing it is being driven by social media. Not cell phones, I'm not saying keep cell phones out of the hands of kids, my daughter has a cellphone, um, but they can use a text messaging app. That's, that's enough engagement, um, the, the social media is a different thing, and then I want to differentiate in this lesson, is like, social media between cell phones, cell phones, you know, to be responsibly, middle school students should not be on a social media site.
And, 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 and I think, you know, parents, and we can help parents with this, and parents can help us with this, um, need, just like, you know, clear guidelines, clear do's and don'ts, you know? And so one that I just, you know, that we talked about, um, the cell phone policy here at, at, um, at the high school is, you know, for any of these kids, a cellphone or phone should not be in, like, here's a clear, here's a clear don't or do. Just don't have a cellphone in a child's bedroom at nighttime, okay? Because nothing good can come of that, okay? Um, and that's something that, that often parents don't think about, you know, just, that's sort of what happens, sort of, all of a sudden, it's, it's a, it's a piece of their thing, you know? It's like carrying, uh, you know, whatever, a wallet, a Kleenex, you know, a tapstick, um, but it's very different of all things. And so, you know, how can we help the parents with some clear do's and don'ts, fair education, what would parents do that? But one simple one is, cell phones just should not be in the bedroom, chart themselves. Nothing good can happen related to night, young people, so. So, um, just wanted to remind about, you need to strengthen, of course, so continue to build, continue to clear expectations, continue to build consistent responses, then some additional resources too, and then finishes a reminder of the Closs, Closs Community Forum, focus on, on, on O'Malley tonight as we should. Thank you, Mr. Titus, for all your work, thank you for your staff's work, thank you for parents, somebody who support us. Um, and we are doing well, we can do better, we will. And, and this also is beyond just our, our, O'Malley middle school, um, we really need to support our youth, come together, and the forum will be another start of that. Um, and hope folks will come out and learn together, but also make some clear action steps that we can, so. That's all for the Zoomers report. All right, thank you, folks, I, I, I just, I, I do hope that, um, it told me our intentions from tonight, um, more about having compassion for all folks involved, understanding, helping folks understand what we're doing already, okay? Um, help them understand a little more about consequence, the how it's come about, help them understand a little bit more about this sort of data, and how, how much is happening at the school. Help them learn a bit, a little, little about what, what middle schoolers face, um, and causes their behavior, um, both good and, and difficult. And then also, um, clearly identify some things we're doing now, and things we have to go to, so I hope we achieve that. And, uh, if we misspoke, or, uh, some folks have some grace listening, because it was a lot of words, so, I appreciate. Again, once, I really appreciate, um, the parents who are here tonight, the parents who are helping out, well, us, what we have to do as well, so.
I was going to say that, it's wonderful to have your attendance and your contributions and your positive, let's, let's get this, you know, let's happen to school like we really want it to be. Because it's not going to just happen from one direction, and I think our students have a lot of powerful voices as well, in terms of maybe they come up with some consequences that, you know, they could be silly, they could be, you know, well-meaning, you know, or hard or whatever, but I just think.
Working on something, a couple of focus groups at the grade levels, to start to get some input there, and, you know, we do the vocal survey, which gives us good data, but it's broad. I want, I want a little bit more, uh, anecdotal and qualitative from students.
One of the parents who reached out to us, um, said that if she really wanted, from difficult times here in O'Malley, she really wanted something positive to be built. She wanted to be a part of the building, something positive, and so I just really appreciate that sentiment so much, and, uh, and we'll make sure a lot of folks can be part of building something positive from, you know, some difficult, difficult circumstances that we're all facing right now, so, yeah.
Uh, so we'll move on to next item of business, uh, which is, uh, subcommittee reports, and we have program subcommittee, uh, March thirty first, two thousand twenty five, and also that the meeting from today.
They're all together?
Yes, you may. Can I skip over?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, all right, we're both clear.
I will start, so, um, this, this program subcommittee met on March thirty first to work on revisions to. We'll start.
Awesome.
Oh, so, um, policy J F V B, which is, um, the school choice policy, we've been working on for quite a while, so, we, um, made a few changes to this, um, uh, firstly, we changed the date. Um, so it's by June first of every school year, we'll determine the number of, um, of spaces available in the school. Um, so that was just giving a little more time to the administration, and then we also changed, uh, in number four, we changed, um, the period in pure district school choice, and that's important, because that's school, that's choice from outside of Gloucester. Um, and our time will be March seventh to June first annually. Um, we've removed, um, number four, which is that an application for school choice may be denied based on safety concerns, that goes contrary to DESI regulations. Um, we, um, leave some clearer and more expanded language for who would be considered a sibling. So, you can read that, common parent, same household, a number of things. Um, on page seven, it also specified that once a non-resident student is accepted through school choice, that student has the right to remain in the district, um, provided their enrollment is continuous until they graduate from high school. So they aren't to reapply, that's consistent with the school choice program. Um, so those were our changes to J F V B.
Um, sure, um, so the first sentence, I mean, the first, number one, where it says, so please, um, to limit the admission of students through school choice. Is that a law or a regulation, or is that just something that you would?
I think that's a policy, and many, many districts do it.
Do not.
By Henry.
Yes, we can, yes. Yeah, you can, you can limit it by grade, or even by student, like, by sort of behavior or anything like that, record. But you can say we only have these grades available, or if you do. Any other questions on this one? We wrote, as we discussed.
I think we should vote as we discussed.
Okay. Okay. So I make a motion that um we approve the revised uh policy J F B B school choice as um recommended to the full committee by Karam Subcommittee.
Thank you, sir.
I move in second.
So besides this, remember we don't have to do the readings.
Right. Um. Any special? Okay, um favor say aye. Everybody selects, and then we're close.
Uh, okay, so next, we're gonna go now to J F A, which is limited to C V T V. Um so the reason we needed to change this policy is now that we have five programs, we are in a new category from DESI, so what we do is we offer an exploratory programs for incoming eighth graders, what that means is that they'll get to try out all the programs. And that's a DESI, that's a DESI regulation, once you have five programs, you're in another category.
And it's required anybody who's interested in C V T V has to do this for support.
Right, now is, you did ask this question, Brian, C V T V.
Okay, great.
Um, you did ask this question of whether the upperclassmen have to go back and do that already, they do not have them yet. Yeah, so but now moving forward, that's gonna be the way in to C V T V.
And and that could, that could also be as a tenth grader too. So the first, the the, sorry, if you're a ninth grader, scheduling, so eighth graders will get uh first shot, I think it is, okay? But if anyone wants to start explo- start C V T, it's first to an exploratory.
So who else in the program are grandfathered in?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
How long is the rotation?
Yeah, so it's a semester, so explorer is a semester long, okay, and so um you have um, and you go through the rotation, I think it's thirteen, I think thirteen weeks for each one, I mean, when I, thirteen days, thirteen days, thirteen days, thirteen days, thirteen days for each program, all five programs. At the end of that semester, then anybody who's done that can choose to go in to to do a full program. Um and uh and at that point, that's when the lottery. No, that's right, lottery happens, no, sorry, lottery happens.
After the.
To lottery, sorry, lottery to get into exploratory, and then if there's too many people so uh choosing certain programs after that first semester, after the explorer semester, then you do lottery again, that's a lottery you guys approved, you know, a few years ago. Yeah.
Great, and one of the things that we specify in this lottery is is, right, as Ben just said, eighth graders get first choice going to ninth, and then if there are still available spots, it can go up, you know, tenth graders can go to the lottery, so there's a progression. Um, I see if there's any other significant issues here, I have a question, unfortunately.
Um so my question is on section seven, it's actually at the top of the page, uh next page, right before eight. Well, so it says, grade nine and ten students will be included in the lottery process if there's not enough eighth grade students to fill the available seats. Which means that's a little confusing, so eighth grade actually means ninth grade, right? So ninth grade should mean tenth grade, and that means tenth grade means eleventh grade, which eleventh grade you don't go into the program, so I'm wondering if that, if I'm misreading it?
Uh, so you're thinking, so.
So you're using eighth grade in the last sentence to actually mean ninth grade.
The lottery happens when they're in eighth.
Lottery happens in the spring of the year, before, because it it's used for scheduling, so it's rising, rising.
So there's still eighth grade is when the lottery happens, okay, right. And then my other question, it's it's not language that was changed, but because Dr. Jarvis is here, I'm curious might to answer to this. So on section number two, the last sentence says, neither a student's disability nor the primary language of their home will have any effect on their admission to the C T E programs. So with my understanding and through my experience, that there are disabilities that could be severe, that um it's not safe for the student to be using machinery, say, right, a student with a disability, it's not safe. But by that language, you're saying that that disability won't prevent them from being in the program. And I just think with the sentence above it, where you talk about reasonable accommodations, which I understand, it 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 seems to me that I should say, student that can have a reasonable accommodation, he won't be part of the program.
This is existing language.
I know, but because he's here, I think that's wrong, because everything I've been through with C V T V, there are disabilities that are unsafe for C V T programs, and I don't want this to give any parent the impression that they're automatically in with a disability, so I'm trying to understand that.
Yeah, so um so it's really important that um that we're not blocking access with the child disability.
Yeah.
So that we have to make sure the language reflects that.
Right.
At the same time, when a child has a disability, receives special ed services or file for accommodations, those teams should should discuss what's appropriate and what supports are appropriate for a child to access.
But what if there aren't supports?
Um.
Huh?
Can you give us an instance?
A student has a disability, I don't know, I don't know about disabilities, so any specific buttons, um so you, we have uh uh carpentry shop, you're using saws.
Yeah.
Right, and a student has a disability where they may not be able to understand the danger of using a saw, right, and
So we we would.
And it might be more extreme than that, because to me, you can hire someone to do that, but like, in other words, if it gets to a point where there's safety issues.
Right.
Then you say, no, you're fine standing in pen, not physical.
So so that the team wouldn't get that decision, so so let's say, use use the example of a saw, right, so so let's say, let's be a ledger, right, so a saw, right? Or tools, there's that. Oh, so we're using a a saw, so so even with support, right, like so, right? So with with somebody's learning, if I'm now learning how to use that, so it can't be hand over hand necessarily, that's not safe. So so that has to roll all the teeth though, the teeth process, so it's not just about support or it's what's meaningful for a child, right, and it's it's.
But is there a point where a disabled child would not get into a program, this is saying no.
Can I, can I say one?
It's important that the policy's there, and we through the team process that would that would decide.
Yeah.
Policy can't block access.
It's an admission, it doesn't say participation, it's an admission, right?
Right, you need to be admitted, admitted to the program.
What I might try to say is that the policy has got to be, uh has to allow for this.
No, I I understand.
But 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 practically, procedurally.
Yeah.
That there, that the team, the team process, governments may find limitations.
Okay.
And and may find, you know, but but that that can't happen at this level.
Right, it did, those are two different levels, so it's, so the document should be there, yeah, the language should be full access, and then drill down from there with another process, and that is team process, and what's meaningfully uh appropriate for a child.
Right, but that's not what that says, but I I get what you're saying, we'll have it, so.
Can't see anything else, can't see anything else.
It's good.
So do we have more questions on this one, everyone? Okay, so I make a motion that we accept revisions to policy J F A, G H S career vote tech education program admissions policy as approved, as recommended by the program subcommittee to the full committee.
Okay.
Okay, moving second, and further discussion. Favor say aye.
Hi. Okay, next.
Yeah.
I'm going to J S, which is proposed, which is a revision of, it is an intra district, so this is now within Gloucester, because we want to go to a different school um than the one in the catchment area. So the main issue here is around kindergarten, right? So on page two, it's where we handle this, so we want, because kindergarten has been an issue and things, and kids becoming so late, um and we also wanted, we were concerned that the parents get sort of, we changed the date so that the parents would know with enough time for school starting. This is in five three, I agree, for kindergarten students, and this is, this is this is only for kindergarten, the review and determination will be completed by August twentieth of the year, and families will be notified no later than August twenty second. So this is um other stu- other that, what else? Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
So ultimately, what happened here is this, is we were, we were, it's strange, like, we were, um because of timeline for kindergarten that was in here, um it got in some trouble in terms of class size. So we admitted uh choice students in the, the most recent exam was Plum Cove, uh at by August first, deadline, and then we had people register for Plum Cove afterward. Okay, that resulted in um a uh a class size of twenty-two, and one class went in another, which is larger than we typically had, we want to have. Um so what we want to do is move the kindergarten selection, kindergarten choice uh in later, in the month, so we'll have a much better idea, a much more confident idea uh of of what what side any of the schools will be in kindergarten. Okay, we don't um allow choice in, and then later have to add folks within the district, in in that in that school zone, which is exactly what happened here. Really, somewhere on like August twenty eighth, these twins moved in, they're both getting kindergarten, like, oh, goodness gracious, they're great, they're great kids, glad they're Plum Cove, Plum Cove, but I want this taken later. Um those 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 families are still registered for their homeschool, they have a spot in their schools, but um uh they don't understand ahead of time when deadline would be, uh we can not afford that, basically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No.
No, not not for this day.
Not for this one. All right, um I make a motion that we accept the proposed revision to policy J F, um intra district school choice timeline for kindergarten students, it's from the policy for admission of students to elementary school as recommended by the program sub.
Second.
Moving second, and further discussion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
He needed to leave, so there's six in favor. Now, folks.
Last one, we did just before this meeting, so this uh is policy J C A, assignment of students to schools, and what happened here was um we moved in section six, which is which we were trying to figure out where to put, take it out of J F B B school choice, and this is the um I don't know what the word is, but we're, if a student moves out of Gloucester, um in general, they need to register where they moved to, and then they can apply for the next school year to school choice. We are making an exception for seniors um who move out of the district after Ju- January thirty first, um that they are able to, if they choose to, to stay in Gloucester, um to graduate with their peers, but specifying that is not school choice, that is not part of the school choice program, to make this a, this is clearer. So this is not school choice, this is sort of like a, I don't know, a privilege, we're offering.
Almost like a side, about.
It's like a side letter for seniors, just for seniors.
Yeah, just for seniors.
So that they could graduate with their class.
Does the superintendent have discretion?
Now or this?
Wait, this language.
I I.
Would you say more?
I do not, because the superintendent has discretion.
So uh only on on allowing twelfth graders.
So.
So since it said, let's read it, assuming it may allow, may, may, not shall, may allow twelfth graders who are on track for graduating and move out of Gloucester after they're in their first year, may enrolled, complete a senior year and graduate with their class.
So you have the option.
So family has an emergency, house burns down, no apartments in Gloucester, and they have to move to Rockford temporarily. It's January. The kids have to leave their school. I struggle with that.
Well, a couple of things on this, because I think then they're considered homeless.
Well, they found an apartment in Rockford, so, because that's the closest place. I struggle with that language because of those reasons, and that's why I ask that you have discretion in certain emergency situations.
Yeah, I I I, so what's important here, and the reason we're narrowing this from, I mean, it was only inferred in the school choice policy before, okay, and um and even that was against the regulations, uh which we already talked about tonight. So there was no place where it was clearly stated, right, most districts say it just as we're putting it, which is, um you know, you live in a district, you enroll in a district, okay? Um I don't, the 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 um the reason by language, the language you found in most places was this, a sort of strict information, okay? We, I didn't find any language where it had sort of that that sort of, there's there's exceptions that are more broad than that. I wouldn't recommend that at all, because it can lead to just inequity, basically, people, superiors, in other words, make decisions based on uh, you know, whim, concern, connections, things like that, okay, so when you talk about emergent situations, I think some gargles like that would be helpful for the superminims.
I just think it's an emerg- and I mean emergency, I understand that you don't want discretion in something, trust me.
Yeah.
But I just think with kids, there are emergency situations that happen at no fault of their own, and changing schools can be the icing on the cake of that kid really falling apart, because there's already change going on, so that's, that would be a scenario where I would hope that there would be discretion, but did you need that language to do it, I don't know, are they gonna use someone else's address, I don't know.
Very.
Right, emergency, yeah, housing emergency.
Not intentional.
No, are you trying to, Melissa, are you trying to include more than, I mean, are you talking about more than twelfth graders?
Yeah, so I'm talking like a tenth grader.
Yeah.
Or a fifth grader, right, is there a way that the superintendent has discretion under emergency housing situations?
Is that when it becomes for choice?
What was that, Amy, no, sorry, I I just missed that.
It it it's it's not, so what we were saying is that for school choice, everyone has the right to to apply to school choice once they leave. But we are, my understanding is because of the DESI regulations on school choice, we can't, it got, that's the issue we got into before, we can't sort of, we couldn't have people applying to school choice in the middle of the year because of a specific circumstance, because that would not be a brand.
I'm not saying apply to school choice, I'm saying let the kids stay where they are.
Right.
Yes, so you're talking about a temporary housing emergency, okay?
Yeah.
Um, you know, so uh homelessness, so for example, there's one type of merge that happens, there's
Right.
They lose their home, their apartments, or their, um and then they're homeless, okay, we still have responsibility to educate, that that's covered, homelessness, we can't even, it's covered, okay? This is something where folks are intending to move back.
Right.
Okay, um uh I just want to hear what the committee, I like, I like that, before I start giving solutions, I like to hear who the committee has said.
I definitely, I mean, we have the very scenario that's happened.
It's happened.
Right, I guess my question would be how do you define an emergency? So a fire, isn't it, like, you know what I mean, is loss of a job.
Fire, flood.
No, no, but 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 emergency is somewhat of a subjective term, is what I'm saying, so, right, someone losing their job and having to move someone's, like, there's reasons people would have to move that could be considered emergencies, and how, I don't disagree, I'm just saying, like, how do we limit this, how do we?
It could be emergency that um, you know, caused by temporary housing.
A natural emergency, meaning it's.
Temporary housing relocation.
Yeah.
And that'll get you, and that's until the end of the year, at least.
And then figure it out, and um the family may have some view of what's happening the next year.
And then school year.
I I uh.
So then well.
It's the question you may ask, is is the question like a cherry sheet issue, like, where does the state recognize that child is, so is it?
Yeah, no, so this is this is important, and that's why we have the language here, that any student, like, the seniors here on this, that would tend um are attending at no cost, because then it's not a cherry cherry sheet issue, and clearly, the state doesn't want it to be. You know, you know, that's why, if they're on their regulations, um you can't have a student be brought into school choice partly through the year, okay, or through another process. Because then school choice on on the, from the state's point of view, this this initial choice state program is a cherry cherry sheet issue. So this situation, not not for us, it's not, for me, it's more about, like, I'm sorry, cherry sheet is 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 the reconciliation, really, to the payments from the state to the cities, okay? And school choice affects this because um, you know, someone's educating one of our students, our, their cherry sheet's gotta reflect that payment, okay? That most enough, right?
But in the emergency situation, you would have already gotten paid from your cherry sheet, because the student's already enrolled, right, for that particular year.
But depends on the payment.
Yeah, so 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 there there's no, there's no transfer of dollars, because on this temporary situation, okay?
Yeah.
I I I just, like, there are plenty of reasons folks have housing situations, okay, and and most of them aren't related to a fire, for example, or a natural disaster.
Right.
Okay, and in in a community like Gloucester, um you know, it's, you know, socioeconomic means we have or don't have, um or, you know, the the kind of challenge our families have on a regular basis. Um, or, you know, the, the kind of challenge our families have on a regular basis. You don't want to get involved. Just, it's too complicated, police strategies like this.
I, I think it's a, it's a legal question, because it's like, where is the money? The state's got, okay, here's the per pupil, should it be going to Rockport or should it be going to us? You know, so.
And then, and that's why, that's why we have registration now, every registration is, is a family, unregistered them and undesired by them. Has got to move from here to, let's say, Beverly, okay? Um, that probably, when we consider housing emergency, they've got your home in Beverly. They, they can't wait, I can't have it, so I'm determined on each of those cases.
So then our language needs to be specific.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay, yeah.
Due to fire or flood, or something that prevents them from living in the home they're currently in. Not needing a job, I mean physically unable. Water held declared cannot live there.
Cannot live in that house, in that house.
I, I, I would, I would suggest a, a legal opinion, because this is state funding, and I don't think, it, it, you know, whatever it is, how many thousands per kid. Might as well get it right, send it here on the fly, trying to figure out what the right language is.
Well, the seniors, anybody saying without a legal opinion, might have been the grade that loses the house from fire.
But I mean, I mean, I, I just think.
I'm just saying that.
I, I just think we could guess.
Yeah.
And we might guess wrong, so I would say instead of spending the next half hour trying to figure it out, let's just.
But something, I mean, yeah, so, so, but what we, I need to go something to leave with, right? But something that would prevent them from uh current, from, prevent them from living. Currently living in their home.
That way.
Okay, um. Uh, and they have to have full intention of returning to that home, okay, because there are plenty of reasons, okay?
Boy in Gloucester.
No, but you don't know.
But I'm saying, for example.
So we, we had to put, I, I, I just wanted to put a little bit of action.
Yes, it's a school year thing.
The school year, I'm not saying forever, I'm saying the school year.
And they tend to return.
I just feel like if you're making an exception for a senior, you can make an exception for a buyer. Because the money is the same, it's the same real question.
There's no money change here. There's, there's no, there's no money at all, and that's what's got to be clear on this, money only changes hands on, to school choice.
Right, that's the point you're trying to make, though, is just the state looking at this while the kids living in Rockport. So it's technically, should have been school choice, which you shouldn't have done in the first place, so.
Yeah, no, the state does allow for this sort of thing as long as not through school choice, okay? The temporary thing, okay? So, so, um but again, but it's not about. We don't do everything they allow, you know, okay, because it's something that are impractical. What's, and I just remember, what's impractical here is like allowing for this, you're trying to make a lot of assumptions here.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not smart.
I, I thought when we first discussed it, it was, hey, we're making this exception for twelve year olds that public education is coming to an end. Let them finish up the school.
Yeah, I think that, that means the reason.
That is what we're doing.
Yeah.
That's what we were doing. Yeah, and we just, but this situation is a real situation.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeable, so just.
So we just.
But what I can understand is if whether the committee wants us to pursue an option here.
I think we do.
Or at least bring an option back to you, then you can vote on it.
Yeah, that way.
I think we do.
Something that would prevent them from, from a situation that prevents them from.
You can even set up the example.
For example. We're including, but that limited to whatever.
Water held declared uninhabitable.
That helps me in the actual.
No, no, don't do that, don't do that. And then, and also I was trying to think of a standard. And I would put in the may, superintendent may. But you, but then you don't want that, you don't want to think of the.
No, I think, I think we just had them.
It seems then be able to. Okay. Um, okay, so we'll not vote on this tonight.
Right.
Um, you understand the intent of the revision?
Thanks, that was my hope, I was support.
Thank you. A lot of work.
So Stephanie, that's it.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Melissa, for the next September report, building finance, that committee, especially today, April ninth.
Um, so we met tonight as a special meeting because the special education reserve fund that was before by the mayor and city council is being established. And we need that motion to um, for the school committee to show support that we want that help to exist. Um, so the superintendent just gave a quick report on what the stabilization fund is, I think we've heard that before, but need to be repetitive. Um, the motion is kind of lengthy, so is there any questions upon the stabilization fund itself? Before I put the motion forward.
Do you have any objections or concerns about the stabilization fund, Melissa?
Um, so, um, I do, but not in creating it, it's more the operational of it afterwards. Um, the, the motion, the language of the motion is the exact match general law language. Um, to establish, so to talk about, using what the vote would do, um, operational afterwards, I would have fun with it, yes. Um, so it was recommended by being an app. Uh, motion by myself, second by Catherine Fancie, though Melvin's not able to attend, maybe she'll have voted. Um, motion is the school committee accepts general law, chapter forty, section thirteen E. Which upon a vote of the city council to accept the same. Authorizes the city to establish an appropriate or transfer money to a reserve fund. Utilized in the upcoming fiscal years to pay without further appropriation. For unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education. And recovery high school programs out of district tuition or transportation. The balance in such reserve funds shall not exceed two percent of the annual net school spending of a school district. Funding shall only be distributed from the reserve funds after a majority vote of the school committee and a majority vote of the city council.
Second. Okay, move in second, uh discussion. So you had questions during our meeting.
Yeah.
About replenishment or and or building, right?
Right, so um I guess, yes, my, I would direct them to you, because this is the fund on the city side, and you would be the one to represent.
The school committee can add one, so. The school committee, it's actually what's um suggested by D O R. So, you, you know, we committed this year to Philly.
Yes.
And uh thankfully, the free cash came in at three point nine instead of two, but I'm like, but still, it's going to be a tight year. So this, and you see, it's for subsequent years, not this year.
Right, not this year.
We'd have to vote in the council, just like all the other uh stabilization funds, the council needs to vote.
So my question is, my question, I can start with the formula. So where does this stabilization fund fit into the formula of other stabilization funds? In other words, every year on free cash.
It's not plugged in as a formula. It was, we committed to communicate with this number.
Right, so what Connor said, I, I just finished, maybe the thought is that. You guys are going to be working on re, revising the form, the formulas.
Yeah, going forward, not, not this year.
No, no, and then, and then it would be for, for next year.
If we, if there's, depending on what free cash looks like, because we added, like, say, over the last couple of years, we added uh. One for um road repair that didn't exist. The whole footage that didn't exist seven hundred years ago to begin with. So I'm, I'm not saying it can't be added, but the commitment was to do this.
Do this for just this year?
Just this year, so we've got it created, it's plugged, the, the big chunk is plugged into it. Uh, seven fifty.
So. Am I hearing correctly that next year, fiscal year twenty seven?
Possibly.
Possibly funding from the city council?
The whole process of the, we would necessarily, the council would just have to approve. I sent a memo to them saying, it's, it's still a hundred percent, we just have to shift the percentages of the, I think it's. It's like capital stabilization and um. It's one for road repair, but um. General, at this time, I can't really think.
Yeah, I understand, so currently there's about five other stabilization funds there in a formula that get funded every year, and this. This one is not in that.
Correct. Do you intend to include it in the?
That, I have no objection to it at this point, but we're not, like I said, it's not in the cards this year, because to avoid confusion, we created this.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've got time next year.
Okay, I did have Connor saying that when they, I think Connor said at the manager meeting, is that when they renew the formula, then they will include this in the formula.
Yeah, and then we figure what's present, and the other thing is, as you saw, the two percent, I haven't calculated what that means.
Yeah, it's about, it's about eight hundred, eight hundred and thousand and change, would be two percent right now.
Right.
So like below that.
But each year it should.
Go up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we're pretty close to the current level, but uh. I, I suspect this won't be around very long, this, this chunk of money, I'm sure we're going to need it soon.
No, I mean, I mean, you know, again, it's, it's, it can't be used in F Y twenty five. And I was, it said that, that's something that's new to us, we didn't know that, that we hadn't built this way, so it's available for us in F Y twenty six. You know, and, and will be, and will be used if there are budget or expenses that we have. But, you know, so we plan not to use it, of course, but it's there if we need it. The last two years, and even to some of you this year. Last year we definitely used it, this year probably used it. Will use it. But next year, I mean, we don't intend to use it, but we might have to.
So, and go into the two percent, right? So next year we'll have seven hundred and fifty in it, right?
Forty seven, I thought, no?
Next year, this, I'm at this year, twenty six, twenty six is going to be seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Soon as we vote, the council votes, it, we're ready to send a memo with distribution, yes.
So the two percent, it's, from what I'm hearing right now, and I didn't put much thought into this that before. So say, just say we borrow three hundred thousand, right? In fiscal twenty six.
Borrowed or withdrew?
Or used it.
Yeah.
Um, withdraw it, okay. Um. What I'm reading is the most that could be put in next year. Is the eight ten versus three hundred, so it's not another eight hundred and ten, because we can't go over.
The max is.
Threshold of, so the highest amount, based on this year, we can always have in there is eight hundred and ten.
Oh, yes, mathematically, and then obviously next year's, the budget grows every year, so.
Right, yes, oh, yeah, that, that ten fluctuates, but you can't have two years.
So if I wanted to say I'll give you a million bucks, I couldn't have done anything.
Right.
Right.
But it's saying, you could give us seven fifty, if we didn't use that money next year, you couldn't give us another seven fifty the year after, you can only give us a difference between.
Two, two percent of what I'm at current budget, so, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's seven fifty more than zero.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to understand what we're getting, right?
Yeah, yeah, but, 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 yeah, it can't just keep growing and growing, growing like some of the other stabilization.
So it's just.
So I was surprised too when Suzanne pointed out the limit on it, but. Um, because we originally looked at a million, then we ended up, without even knowing this, shifted two fifty to something else last year, right?
At some point, we knew the two percent, but, but it was, it was later, at some point during the process last year, but that was a surprise to me.
And then curious, curious to know your opinion on this, so say the money is in the account, uh next year we go to city council, school committee takes a vote, we want the money, we go to city council. Um, is there? A, do you believe that the city council will have? Any um action stating, well, we gave you six million dollars extra last year, you didn't spend it correctly, we're not giving it to you, right? So.
I can't, I can speak for myself, as when I sat on the city council, I, I wouldn't, because it's there for that purpose. And I don't recall um for my time in the council, I didn't really follow which spot it was meant to put too closely, but when I, I don't recall the council ever. Denying, voting down.
Okay.
So, but it's based on who the majority is, you know, in any given year, what their thoughts are. But I don't, it's there for a purpose, and, because if, if, if there's a shortfall, let's say there's a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall. And we vote, we need the money, we go to council and say, nah, we're not going to do it, so what do you expect? You know, supplemental appropriation from what, or you just give us this, that's made for this purpose, so. I don't, I don't foresee, you know, even if we, we've had some really. Um, extreme city councils, I, I, I can see them voting. But I can't predict. I, I can never predict.
I don't. Okay, um, thank you, could you, could you make, you may have.
Motion is second.
Okay, any more discussion? Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So.
Thank you.
Uh, this, so um Ben and I worked on revising this letter for. Yes, for uh to send to Senator Tar and Representative Bronte, as well as the. Chairs and vice chair of the Ways and Means Committee to advocate for specific things we'd like them to refund. Um, and do, so, uh one is, you know, chapter seventy eight, as Senator Tar explained. That it's currently in the governor's budget at seventy five dollars, we picked the number that we urged them to basically. Almost double, let's say, minimum one hundred and thirty, and this is going to be the only way chapter seventy money that's coming here would get increased as if. Longer process that per pupil goes up. Um, so that's that one, circuit breaker, fully funded, basically that's where I'm advocating for that, which is always um very important. Um, Senator Tar talked about workforce, workforce grants, and, and that might be a possibility coming out of the Fair Share Act. So we're asking for that, that we support that. Um, Senator Tar also submitted within our support. Um, Senate Bill number four fifty seven, an act to establish the middle school innovation fund. Uh, based upon what they saw in the valley, that they thought the state should have, and that could be new money coming out of the Fair Share Act as well. Um, to kind of replicate or, or capitalize on these kind of models. Um, and then um basically saying we of course support the chapter seventy foundation review.
Sure.
Um.
Yeah, then we won't see it in a long time.
At least we keep, we got to keep it, we got to deal with the future. We do need to go around, so um the House is going into their budget process, I mean, they're going to vote on their budget. Uh, probably fifteen or sixteen, and then it'll move on to the Senate, and then they'll reconcile it, so it's good that it gets to vote. Um, you know, for it, so that we can be in there as saying, this is what we want, and I will make sure that. The city council gets a copy of this, so that they know we're advocating.
Excellent.
Okay, so I move that we um approve the letter. Uh, for advocating for uh education funding and legislation as presented. Second. Okay, any discussion?
Very well written, great, thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, um, okay, and the other item on the agenda. Or action aside for grants is to approve. The increase to superintendent's salary for this current this year, because we have not done it yet. Um, and so coming out of executive session last time, we um. Voted to approve uh current year pay adjustment in the amount of two point seven five percent. Um, as well as increasing the retention incentive by one thousand dollars. So I so. Just second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, um, and last action is to accept um grants, uh ones that we'll build together. The fiscal year two, two thousand twenty five S C zero seven two three. M A Freshport grant in the one of sixteen thousand oh seventy five. And the fiscal year twenty five Perkins four twenty two A grant in the amount of thirty five thousand, so. Second, and move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, we are going into executive session, hopefully it will be brief, uh we will only come out for the purpose to. Adjourn. Um, so, but I move that we go into executive session, uh pursuant to executive session purpose to invest generally one thirty A, section five one A, to discuss strategy. Um, and or to conduct contract negotiations with. First, okay, there's nothing left over, um, so. That works, it's the bottom one, uh to discuss strategy with respect to what the bargain in Gloucester, Asney, their fully unit A, and new supervisors in association. Second, okay, move in second. Oh, oh, thanks.
Sheen Conancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Ms. Lisa?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, anybody that has hung in there with us.